Good evening and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this September 27, 2022. I'm pleased that we have Pastor DeMarcus Hill with us today of Relentless Church. He will be providing our invocation. That invocation will be followed by the pledge brought by Deputy Hall. For those of you that are willing and able, please stand for our invocation. And Pastor, please join us up here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come into this place this evening. You have given us great responsibility, and we know that there is a great task ahead. Give everyone that's a part of the Commission and the county the wisdom, the understanding, the guidance, the strength, the insight, so that they can make right decisions as they lead and guide your people. We don't always know what's ahead, but we know as long as you are on the throne and you being with us, we will have the wisdom it takes to operate, to govern, to witness, and to do the work as stewards over the people that you have assigned us to. This task ahead is not something that we put our hands to the plow in a way that we don't know the work ahead, but because we have, we trust in you, knowing that you will lead us, guide us, and help us to do the work that we're supposed to do, so that all things will be done right in your sight. Give us a plan, give us peace, let everyone in this room come to the right mind, the right heart, with the right understanding, so that we can do things in order, in decency, and quickly, because there's a great task and a great agenda ahead. So give us peace for your purpose, guide us, direct us, so that we have hope in doing all things according to your will and your plan and purpose for our life. Give us the grace to do it, give us the strength to do it, give us the boldness to do it, but also give us the resource to do it in the right way. The storms that are ahead, God, guide our hands, guide our minds, guide our, our work, our lives, so that we do things that are pleasing in your sight, but we do things in this meeting in decency and in order, so that we can accomplish what you have for us to accomplish on this day. We bless you, we honor you, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor and Deputy Hall. Our meeting is now officially called to order. Today, we have three public hearings before us. The first one is with respect to our Department of Transportation. I believe we have Carl with us today. And Carl, you can kick us off with our hearing.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. For those that don't know me at home, in the public, my name's Carl Von Hago. I'm a deputy director of the Department of Transportation. Our first item at DOT tonight is to request the Board to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for transit planning, engineering, and environmental services for Cumberland Transfer Center Site Selection Study, Project E10C04, the Marietta Transfer Center Site Selection Study, Project E10C05, and the South Cobb Transit Center Site Selection Study, Project E2417. This is in reference to the second phase of a site selection process for these three transfer centers. The first phase was already awarded to a consultant who's doing a planning study on system-wide needs of Cobb Link, and they will take the results of that system-wide need of Cobb Link study, and they will identify these three needed areas, what are the features required for the ultimate sites. This will relate to three different contracts that'll come to you in the future, which will focus on actually finding the site selections for these particular sites individually. And at this time, I request the Board to conduct that public hearing.
Thank you, Carl. As our public hearing procedures go, an unlimited number of speakers may come forward and address this topic for three minutes apiece. The topic must be limited to this matter only. So with that, I'll declare the public hearing open, and again, anyone can come up and speak and address this matter for three minutes.
Good evening.
Yeah.
I just have to wonder, if we don't know the needs of Cobb Link yet, why we're going forward and authorizing to spend more money for something when we don't even know the needs and know what we need to do? So I would really question that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker.
My name's Craig Harfoot. This is a question, but I know you're not going to answer. I read real quickly in the back that it was 2011 SPOLOST. It was like, how does something like this come along and then need a study? How did it get on the SPOLOST in the first place? But anyhow, because some of the studies I've seen that were done long ago, they're just have a lot of questions about, did they actually come up with a good plan after spending all the money? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers to address this matter and this matter only? With that, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Carl, if you're still here, thank you.
There's no action required.
No action required, thank you. And there were two questions. I know our director is not here. You can either address them, or we can send them back to the director. One of them was inquiring why we are referring to the 2011 SPOLOST for these items. And the second one is, how can we move forward with this item if we don't comprehensively know what the needs of Cobb Link are?
So, so there is funding for transit facilities in the SPOLOST programs, and it's for their planning funds, and which is what we're conducting is planning on there. The second question, I didn't quite understand. What was the need of Cobb Link?
Yes. It, it was stating, how can we move forward with this item without the county knowing what the needs of Cobb Link are?
So we have, we have extensive studies in knowing what the needs of the Cobb Link system are and what projected future may look like for Cobb Link under different funding scenarios. The important thing for this particular item is we know there's a need for additional transfer centers, and this is actually finding the sites that are, are going to be possible to be used in the future. We have to identify the features, how many, how many acres, what kind of terrain, those sorts of things, what kind of access points along the proposed routes we're talking about, and of course, there has to be available land out there and going through a site selection process.
Thank you. Appreciate you answering that. Before you go, let me just check and see if the Commissioners have any questions or comments? Question? We're good. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have our second public hearing, which will be brought by Director Gwynn, with respect to a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Jessica Gwynn, Cobb County Community Development Director. This evening, we do have a Chattahoochee Corridor Compliance Certificate for consideration at 4217 Pissis Ferry Road. This property is about half an acre located within the Chattahoochee Corridor area. Due to that, it's required to come to the Board of Commissioners for consideration, as well as to the Atlanta Regional Commission. What's being proposed is to just renovate an existing single-family home, so that's the work that they're doing there. It's already been reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and they've determined the request to be consistent with the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. So this evening, we would just ask the Chair to open the public hearing, and I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Similar format to the last public hearing, we will take an unlimited number of speakers to address this agenda item and this agenda item only. The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn things over to Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve the certificate of compliance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is certainly one I believe most people are here for, and that pertains to our updated amendments. And I'll turn things back over to you again, Director Gwynn.
All right, thank you. So this is the second public hearing for the second round of code amendments in 2022. The first public hearing, of course, was held on September 13th, so just a couple of weeks ago. This evening, I'm not going to go through the, the full presentation, as I've already done that at a VOC work session, as well as at the, the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. So tonight, I just want to hit the highlights of the changes that have taken place. The draft that was presented a couple of weeks ago did not change from what was initially published when they were first published. So since that time, we've taken the feedback that we've gotten from the Board, as well as feedback from the public that we've received to date, as well as just some ongoing conversation among staff about how to make things work a little bit better, and made some updates to the, to the draft. So you all have the proposed latest and greatest drafts before you, and those were the ones that were included in the packet for this evening. So again, I'm just going to hit the highlights. Glad to answer any questions. After all is said and done, of course, we'll ask for the public hearing to be opened. So the first section is Chapter 2. No changes have been made to this one, and again, this is just the chapter that would give the Code of Enforcement Division authority to enforce the new Article 14 in Chapter 18, and that's the multifamily rental housing inspection program. So no changes there. And that brings us to 18. Again, this is the, the section that would establish the multifamily rental housing inspection program, requiring an annual inspection of a minimum of 25% of multifamily units internally, as well as 100% externally, specifically looking for, for consistency with the International Property Maintenance Code and the FIRE codes. What we're proposing here is that certification would be required to be submitted with occupation tax renewal, so that would be with the business license each year, as year and year business licenses, property owners would be required to submit documentation of their inspections, and this would be effective for the 2024 renewal season. So right now, actually, next week, I believe, we're sending out letters for the 2023 occupation tax renewal, so that tells you it's, it's going to be a full year for those first, that first round of inspections to be done before we're going to require that documentation. And since the last public hearing, all that we've done to this section is, is really just to make some changes and clarify some language based on the county attorney's recommendation. It hasn't really materially changed, materially changed the substance there, just some clarifying language. And again, glad to answer any questions about that. Chapter 54, this pertains to a permit required from the Fire Marshal's Office for outdoor events exceeding 1,000 attendees. Again, no changes here. Chapter 78, and I think this is probably the one a lot of people are most interested in, is pertaining to short-term rentals. Again, we're, at this point, we have no regulations pertaining to short-term rentals, so this is the third time we've brought this before the Board for consideration, and this has always been evolving, and we've gotten a lot of input from you all as the Board of Commissioners, as well as from the public, and also others who have short-term rentals, and, and I think we've gotten, you know, good understanding about some of the concerns there. So basically, the short-term rental code would define what a short-term rental is. Of course, that's a rental that is less than 30 days. It would require a short-term rental certificate, so it's not a business license, but it's basically like a license or documentation that, you know, you've come to the business license division, and that we, we have an understanding that there's a short-term rental at that location. And most importantly, it requires a short-term rental agent. A lot of the concerns that we have with short-term rentals, noise, parking, litter, those sorts of things, are things where there's already a code in place to address them, but with short-term rental occupants, they're there for such a short time, they're here for a couple of days, then they're out. With the short-term rental agent, first of all, it gives us somebody that we can contact if there's a problem, that would be responsive to address the issue. And also, the intent of the code here is that with the, the penalties that are proposed, and that with the requirement for the certificate, if there are violations, you could potentially lose your right to have a short-term rental at your, at your property. So hoping that through that effort, this will encourage those property owners to really vet the, the people who they're renting their property out to ensure that they're going to be good neighbors for that short time that they're there. So changes since public hearing number one, and, you know, again, a number of these were recommendations that came from some of our civic groups, and we appreciate that feedback. I think, you know, more minds together working on something makes it better, so we appreciate that. The first is that new short-term rental certificate would be required with a change of ownership. So if someone sells their property that has a short-term rental certificate, the certificate doesn't transfer to the new owner. If they also wanted to use that property and potentially as a short-term rental, they would have to come back and get a new short-term rental certificate for that. We added some language to, that's specific to properties that are multifamily properties. It's not likely, I think, that many apartment complexes would allow for someone to sublease their, their unit for a couple of weeks while they're out of town, but in the event that they do, we wanted to be sure that, again, we're taking that into consideration. A lot of those properties are owned by corporations that perhaps have multiple directors, and so to try to have someone get the contact information for all of those directors may be more troublesome than it's worth. So we've provided an exemption here based on recommendation with the Apartment Association to add some consideration for a property that has an onsite property manager that can serve as the short-term rental agent. If there's somebody there onsite, then maybe we don't need to have the names and contact information for 25 people on their Board of Directors. We've also clarified and some removed some other language that was unclear and unenforceable. Those were some other good comments we received from some of our civic groups, like reasonably, what does that really mean? When we say someone's got to respond in a reasonable amount of time, you need to get there. The short-term rental agent needs to get there and handle the situation. We also added a requirement, and again, another great recommendation from one of our civic groups, for notification of the Homeowners Association or Property Owners Association if it's applicable. So what this would be is on the application for your short-term rental certificate, there would be a sworn statement that if there is an HOA or POA, that is, the property falls under, that you have notified them of the application. Of course, we cannot enforce HOA or POA covenants, but HOAs and POAs certainly have the right to restrict short-term rentals further than what this code does, so we want to be sure that everybody's clear about that. Another change that's been made, and this is probably one of the more significant changes to this code section, previously, the code said one adult per 390 square feet, and that's consistent with our, our single-family residential definition and the zoning ordinance, and there was a lot of discussion about that. What we've done here is to remove that language about 390 square feet and to specify that parking and occupancy limitations are subject to 134-1 for single-family residences. So again, it ties it back to the definition, our requirements are in Cobb County for single-family residences. That way, if down the road, the Board decides to look at that language, we don't have to go back and change this section of the code unless the Board has desire to. And also, it's just very clear that, you know, the short-term rentals are subject to the same requirements as any other single-family residential property, because that's where they are. They're still residential properties. We've added a requirement for the short-term rental certificate number to be listed on any advertising. And then we've also clarified in there the methods for code enforcement complaint, and another great suggestion from one of our civic groups to really spell out, it said in writing, but, you know, in code enforcement, you can also submit a complaint verbally by giving us a call, you can send an email, there's the online application. So there are a number of ways that you can submit a complaint to code enforcement, and also, it can be anonymous, and this would be the same, just like any other code enforcement complaint. We want our citizens to have the opportunity that if they feel more comfortable, that they can make that complaint anonymously, and also not put them in a bad situation, potentially where they're concerned about any sort of retaliation or, or bad blood with their neighbors. So a couple of things here that I would like for the Board to also consider, these are things that have come up since the latest published draft, so I've just put these down here as additional consideration, that if the Board wants to move forward with these, we would want to have that incorporated into a motion. In a, a meeting that we had with Commissioner Burrell and Commissioner Sheffield the other day to talk a little bit further about the short-term rentals, one of those suggestions that we've included is to add in H1, which specifies that short-term rentals can, are available or could be done in any of our districts. That we also include in there that no more than one short-term rental certificate shall be issued per dwelling unit. So if someone has a house and they've got three bedrooms, they can't get three short-term rental certificates and lease each one out as a separate, separate rental. One dwelling unit, one certificate. So that's something that, you know, if the Board would like to add that, that we would need to include here. Also, there was some discussion about increasing the fines. Currently, the fine for the first violation within 12 months is $500. The second violation is $750, and then third violation will result in revocation of the short-term rental certificate. That fine could be as much as $1,000 according to the County Attorney's Office, because it is a, you know, misdemeanor. And then the $500 per day for operating without a short-term rental certificate. So if someone's out there rogue, running their, their short-term rentals, and they have not come through the process, then it would be 500 days, or $500 per day. So that's something that if the Board would like to discuss and have some conversation and look at changing that, that that's on the table this evening. And then finally, there was also a suggestion to an H8, which spells out all of the things that must be posted in the unit, including the short-term rental agent's contact information, the maximum occupancy, the maximum number of vehicles, to also include in their provisions regulating noise. That's required in the advertisement, and that's in that language, but then to also include it, actually posted in the unit, what the regulations are pertaining to noise. One additional thing that I would like to consider this evening, and I thought about it later on, didn't add it to the slide, but, you know, this is something that, of course, will take some time to get up and going, so we'll want to have a date, an effective date on this. My recommendation would be to say January 1st, because January 1st is when business licenses renew each year. So since this is something, I'll go through the business license office. I think having that align with the, the date for all of our other permits, occupation tax certificates and what have you, makes a lot of sense, and gives us some time to work on educating the public and helping people, you know, get all their forms and everything submitted, so that we can move forward with that. Moving right on to Chapter 83, this is pertaining to weed control. Again, this was a, a great recommendation from one of our civic groups to have, you know, currently, we have an exemption for properties that exceed 40,000 square feet or about an acre from the weed control ordinance. However, there are a lot of lots out there that are, are home lots, you know, they have a house on them, or, or some other structure that are more than an acre. So the recommendation was to have the exemption for properties under single ownership of 40,000 square feet, unless there's a building or structure within 75 feet of the public right-of-way. So in that case, up until the structure from the right-of-way would need to be maintained. And at the last hearing, or the, the work session, I believe, as we discussed this, and we had a, a recommendation from the Commission to add an exemption for properties that are agricultural in nature. So we've incorporated that, and that's the only change to this section. Chapter 90, which restricts smoking in county-owned park facilities. Again, no changes to this from the first public hearing, it's still the same language. Chapter 106, and this pertains to sidewalks and developer contributions, allowing for a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction and also for other improvements. The new draft clarifies after the, the last discussions that the funds that are collected would be used in the district where they are collected. Chapter 110, we've had a lot of great conversation about this with the County Attorney's Office and DOT, and this is for our private streets. And of course, basically, what we're providing here is that private streets would be required to be built to county standards. Those servicing materials, it would be the same as any other county road, unless there's an alternative that's proposed and approved by the, by the DOT Director. For instance, some, some private subdivisions with private roads may have some sort of a paver feature or what have you in their road. As long as that material is approved by the DOT Director, then that would be allowable. But this would also include, and this is one of the things that a little more clarification was needed on, this would include that roadway and lane widths would be subject to county standards, runoff, intersection design, street grays, speed, alignment, curves and gutters, so on and so forth, signing, striping, all those things would be the same as for county roads. The next piece that we've added to this, and this is where we've done a lot of good work, is with the mandatory POA or HOA. So we've clarified that it could be a Homeowners Association or a Property Owners Association. Depending on what type of development it is, it may have one or the other. But if, for any type of development, be it residential, commercial, industrial, to have private streets, they would need to have an association that would be responsible for maintaining those roads in perpetuity. And this is where we had a lot of back and forth. We wanted to be sure that whatever was in here would provide the mechanism to ensure the, the continued maintenance of those roads, but also without being overly burdensome to the developer, or to the property owners, or to county staff from an enforcement standpoint. So what we've amended the language to say is that there would be a declaration of covenants recorded with the Clerk of Superior Court, that would provide clear legal authority to maintain and control of the streets to the association, and also would give the association the rights to collect funds from the members for maintenance, that those streets would be maintained and insured at no liability or maintenance responsibility to the county, and also to specifically require in the Declaration of Covenants that the association would be required to maintain or repair the streets to county standards. So I think that's maybe simplified it a little bit, but hopefully still achieves the goal that we're, we're seeking to in terms of ensuring that those roads will continue to be maintained long after the, the builder or developer has left, left the scene. And then, of course, we've also incorporated in there the section pertaining to hazardous private streets, which would pertain to existing private streets and not necessarily private streets and new development unless they, down the road, become hazardous. Nothing has changed in that part of the code from what was previously proposed. 134, in the zoning chapter, we've added a definition to 134-1 for gross trip generation. Again, lots of discussion about the requirements for traffic studies for rezoning proposals, and so to really further clarify how we're going to determine at what point a traffic study would be required, it's going to be based on gross trip generation, which takes, does not take into account alternative modes of travel and what have you. So gross trip generation has been defined in 134-1. We also added language to the heavy automotive repair establishments, speaking to providing adequate screening for that establishment from residentially zoned properties that may be adjacent. This language is already in the light residence, or the light automotive definition, so we've just carried that same language over to the heavy automotive. And that was per the planning commission recommendation. And then we've also clarified the language in the auto repair definitions to specify three vehicles per storage bay to be parked outside overnight. It just said stored. We clarified no more than three per service bay to be parked outside overnight so that we don't have an abundance of vehicles sitting on the lot waiting for repair. 121, again, this goes back to the traffic study, and this is where we've clarified that the determination of the need for a traffic study would be based on gross trip generation. I know that you all have received some communication regarding the requirement for a minimum of 30 days on the traffic study, that the traffic study would be submitted no later than 30 days prior to the planning commission hearing. We've had some back and forth about that. DOT is comfortable with that. Zoning staff was not quite as comfortable with it. The compromise that we reached was, let's say, require the traffic study at least 15 business days prior to the planning commission. And of course, the way the language is written, it says that the zoning manager may continue a case if it's not received. It doesn't obligate him to. If it's a simple thing and it's something, maybe there's just a couple of tweaks needed to the traffic study or what have you, the zoning manager would have that discretion to say, okay, we can move this forward, or if they call and say, hey, we just need one more day. But it still does provide a standard of what the expectation is. So again, if that's another one that, if that's something the board wishes to move forward, would need to be incorporated into a motion this evening. 134-162, no changes here. This is the section we're deleting in its entirety because it's duplicative description of the zoning districts. 134-192, this is the use chart. Again, no changes. We're just simply adding bulk landscape materials business to the use chart. And then 204, 206, 207, 217, 219, 221, 228, those are all of our multifamily districts where we've incorporated the same language as we have in the purpose-built student housing code, requiring a security plan to be coordinated with law enforcement, incorporating crime prevention through environmental design, and annual review of the plan by the property manager, and that the plan would be provided to the county upon request. So again, no changes to that from the first hearing. 230 and 231, these are industrial districts. Again, no changes here. We've just simply added bulk landscape materials business to the permitted uses listed for the LI and HI zoning districts. 134-266, this pertains to lighting requirements for gas station canopies. The only thing that's changed since the first draft here was that we've added an effective date per the planning commission recommendation of October 1st, 2022. And then sign maintenance, again, this section sets forth requirements for the maintenance of signs. The only new language that's been incorporated here per commissioner's suggestion was to include language in there, speaking to missing tenant panels shall be replaced. So if someone moves out, or if a panel just disappears, a little tenant sign, that that would need to be replaced. There would need to be something there. It can just be open and illuminated. So that summarizes the changes. Again, we, this is our, we've had three public hearings now on Chapter 134 zoning. The first one, of course, was the planning commission. And then we've had two public hearings with the Board of Commissioners, or will have once you all open and close the public hearing this evening. And that, of course, is what's required for code amendments. So after the public comment this evening, then I'll come back up and we can go. Typically, we'll go chapter by chapter with your board action. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, for that overview of the code amendments that are being proposed this evening. Wanted to remind the public, before I open up the public hearing, that Section 102 pertaining to solid waste has been tabled. The board will not be taking any action with respect to that code section tonight. For those who are here to address that matter, you may do so, but again, understand that the board will not be taking any action with respect to that section. With that, the public hearing is now open. We will take an unlimited number of speakers pertaining to the matters that were presented as part of the code amendment package. Each speaker will have a total of three minutes to speak. Amy, you can feel free to approach.
Good evening. My name is Amy Barnes, and I am speaking today about the automotive restriction of three cars per service bay. The issue I have is this is basically stripping off of existing auto repair shops. It's taking away from them the right and ability to have more than three vehicles. I don't know how much you understand about car repair shops, but forcing them to choose which customers to flea-flick between for that day will increase the costs of car repair for all of us. Many times, they don't govern who parks there overnight, because many, many, many times I have had to call a tow truck, or a friend of mine has had to call a tow truck, or a family member has had to call a tow truck in the dead of night if something breaks down somewhere. They literally have no control over who parks in their parking lots overnight. And forcing these businesses to adhere to something that is impossible and beyond their control gives rise to a due process rights challenge. It's illegible. Plus, this is taking from existing businesses the right to have more than three cars. So if they are forced to restrict the number of customers that they can flea-flick between to jobs per bay, that's a hardship. It's going to cause all of us to pay increased fees to our car repair. The other thing I have with Airbnb, I'll give you the nuclear weapon against all commercial Airbnb. It's one line of text, I promise you, it's so easy. All you have to do is require the agent to live on the premises, and boom, big reveal. They can't afford that. BlackRock and other companies literally cannot afford to have someone living in the unit while operating in Airbnb. Many of these managers, they hop between, and they might rate 110 of them. So there it is. That's a nuclear weapon against commercial Airbnb. Now, I'm one person. I'm not two people. I'm not three people. But I have two extra bedrooms. It would be nice for me to be able to rent out for a single night, here or there. There are football games. I could probably get $1,000 for a night. I mean, there's an old grandma living up the street somewhere. These restrictions are so onerous, they're making it hard on individuals to actually have Airbnb.
Excuse me, ma'am. Your three minutes are up.
Again, I would, I would like to present to you all to consider, as a former elected official that sat in one of those seats, I would definitely, yes.
Please state your name for the record.
I am Courtney Omega-Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would love us to really reconsider and revisit, particularly the ordinance about multifamily dwellings and apartments. What this does, let me tell you, just in very simple terms. As housing was my platform as well, as I sat on a number of boards as it pertained to this platform, when you are gentrifying, which let's be very clear, it's destroying communities, the first places that you're doing it are with the most vulnerable. These multifamily housing or multifamily complexes are filled with people that are literally living less than even paycheck to paycheck. A lot of these apartment complexes are marketed as affordable, but then we have to definitely consider what is affordable in this day and age to families that are working three jobs to make one month of rent. So to put this type of pressure on them without any other alternative to have to help their properties that they don't own reach some type of code or some type of standard in order to even be able to continue to live there, for their children to be able to go to schools in the community, for them to be able to continue to work in the community, to put this type of pressure on people that don't even own the properties. Because I can tell you this, that in all of my years, I've never seen a landlord evicted with their properties on the street with them. As a former elected official, in my first year nonetheless, I suffered an eviction. I can tell you that this, these are the tools to gentrification and to destroying communities. As I've said before, every time I look at, you know, you ladies, it's epic. And I can tell you that the nation is watching. Georgia is making a lot of progress when it comes to giving true power to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would love you all to consider it and continue it. Thank you.
My name is Gornell Hodge, and I'm staying in Silver Creek Crossing Apartments. Silver Creek Crossing, we was under new manager, rather. And I have today an eviction notice on my door for some, I've not paid rent. And then the ledger shows that I have missed numerous of months of rent, where I have my rent receipts, then they're adding like hundreds of dollars for late payment, and $14 for rental insurance, which I haven't paid any rental insurance. But I've been paying my rent, and I don't know what's going on, where they're saying I owe them a total of $8,000. And I just don't understand. It's too much, you know, and I really, you know, need, you know, like a cheaper place. I have two granddaughters and one which is severely handicapped. My bathroom is mildewed for two months. I've called, no one fixed it, you know, so I just think it's why I think they should repair it, because while I've been there, I've been suffering headaches, and my granddaughter 11, she can't talk or speak, so I don't know what's the problem there. And then she's wheelchair-bound, while I'm having to pull her up 23 steps every day. So I just, I don't know what's going on with this eviction, and while I'm being, you know, have the court for October the 6th, so that's all.
Ma'am, is there a particular code section that you would like for us to address?
Oh, I don't know. I just, like I said, my bathroom is mildewed, and like I said, it's been there for like two months.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Ms. Georgia Tab. It's a pleasure to see some of you guys again. I understand I don't have three minutes, but I came tonight in reference of my community and their concerns.
Yes, Ms. Georgia, Ms. Georgia, Ms. Georgia, yes. Yes, good to see you this evening. I want to make it clear that this portion of the meeting is to address code amendments. Code amendments are where we are changing the county law with respect to the chapters that the director just read. I'm concerned that the last public comment and potentially what we're getting ready, the last speaker, excuse me, and potentially what you may be getting ready to share, may be more appropriate for our public comment, which is not addressing the code in particular.
Absolutely.
Yes, are you addressing the county code today?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And the county code with respect to?
In reference to what Ms. Courtney Omega-Dawson was, I wanted to piggyback her concerns.
Yes, ma'am. From the prior speaker, ma'am, she, it was not possible for me to know which code section she was referring to. The one before, it's Ms. Courtney. Okay, yes. Okay, so this is the one with respect to multifamily housing inspection.
Absolutely, and that's what Ms. Hodge, Ms. Hodge was just, she was addressing those concerns as well, but she was telling about, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to state this, and it's been bothering me all day, you know, just to get it out, you know, to get it said, you know, at the meeting with someone that will hopefully understand. It's one thing when you hear about things like this on the news or something, but it's another thing when you actually live in that thing. You know, who wants to live in unlivable conditions? Help us to hold these landlords and property owners accountable for these unlivable conditions the same way they hold us accountable for these outrageous rent prices. We're not here today to say some things don't work, but this thing just doesn't work.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Chairwoman Cupid, Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. My name is Joseph Santoro. I'm here on behalf of the Council for Quality Growth. We are a nonprofit trade association representing over 300 companies comprised of architects, attorneys, developers, contractors, engineers, as well as financial executives with a vested interest in quality growth and development here in the metro Atlanta region as well as in Cobb County. And I spoke at the last, the first public hearing on September 13th, and we have worked and got additional feedback from our membership and worked with staff as well, and wanted to give a shout out to them for working with us on these code changes. And, you know, as the Board of Commissioners aim to adopt the 2020 code amendment package this evening, potentially, we respectfully ask you to consider the following recommendations. The first is relating to Chapter 110. This is the subdivision design standards and required improvements. So with Chapter 10 relating to the private streets and new developments, we do appreciate staff removing the bond and maintenance fund requirements in the original draft, as well as providing that flexibility in approving alternative materials. However, at this point, we still are a little unclear about what that fiscal impact of those proposed privacy requirements could and potentially have on future developments. So just wanted to mention that to the Board of Commissioners today. The next recommendation and comment is on Chapter 134 relating to zoning. I know we brought this up at the last public hearing relating to the traffic impact study requirements, whereas newly added language requires traffic impact study completed at least 30 days prior to a planning commission hearing. And at the first public hearing, we provided our recommendation to reduce that 30-day prior to 15 days prior. And, you know, and we believe that that to be more comparable to what we're seeing across the region. And, you know, we did hear back from Jessica and her team about the 15 business days. And as that is more favorable, and that equates roughly to 21 calendar days, I just want to preface by saying to the Board of Commissioners that what we're hearing from some of our builders and developers is taking roughly several months to even tee up a consultant to do the traffic impact study, let alone about several months to complete that study, and then now waiting an additional 21 days to go through that process. So with that, I'll just leave that up to the consideration of the Board of Commissioners and ask for your favorable consideration on that. In the council, we continue to serve as a resource for the county and are here to provide any support we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alonso, and I'm in speaking for the audience of multifamily and apartment complexes.
Thank you.
I would say I've been a resident of Cobb County almost a year. October 14th would be a full year. The beginning moved here from Louisiana, I actually enjoyed it. Nice community, people was friendly, no issues. Now, I will say on behalf of that is, some of the apartment complexes, yes, while some of them could be unlivable or need work done to them, that probably should have need work done to them, that probably should have been done before tenants move in. But now my question is, what happens if you have to renovate a whole apartment complex as well? Some of these people are forced to go. Some of them are living on limited income, some are on disability, and right now it's already a struggle just to even make ends meet. No, some people having to hold two and three jobs. So my recommendation is like, what is the solution? We can't just keep coming up with a temporary fix, and it's not a fix. We create more damaged-in structural fixtures, if that makes sense. And like I said, if we're gonna redo whole apartment complexes, where are the people to go while those apartments are getting renovated? Will we put them in hotels? Will we put them in if they're in their lease? Or some people getting rentals assistance and might not even be able to get their lease renewed? Where are they to go? So that's pretty much all I have with that, and hopefully the board hear that and make a useful solution that'll help us Cobb County residents. That's all I have.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Mercedes Perez, and I'm here to reference of the audience of the multifamily apartment complex inspections. I'm concerned because I'm a mother of three, and everybody is going through something in life right now. Right now, I'm with the Musministry Shelter, and I only have four days to be with them. I have called different resources, a lot of resources stating that neither I'm not qualified, I have needed to be a veteran, a predator, or, or mental or a drunk addict in order to get some type of help. I was trying to see what's going on, like trying to see if anybody could help family like me that have this situation. You know, I'm a hard worker. I'm actually from Florida. I came to Georgia to prosper, because this is the state to prosper. But going through what we're going through with, with the economics, you know, and the, the money, and all the, everybody getting evicted with no type of help, and if they do give us a help, they give us a temporary help, and from there, we don't know where else to go. I was just wanted to state to see if there's any type of better resources that is actually gonna help situation and family like us. I'm just need some, some type of better resources and better help, because I know there's people out there that we could go ahead and help our communities and help family like mine and to build better place for our kids. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. I'd like for my assistant to get your contact information to see how we can help, but I just really want to emphasize that the portion of this meeting is to address multifamily housing inspections. And we're starting to see creep into communication that's more appropriate for our public hearing. And so I just want to reiterate that for any of our speakers. We do want to be sensitive to the sensitivity of this matter, but again, I'm just asking if anyone is here with respect to evictions or needing help with respect to that, you're either free to see one of our assistants who are seated up here in the front row. If you can just raise your hands. They know where you are, they can get your contact information, and we can assist you. But this portion of the meeting where we have three minutes allotted is to speak particularly to the codes that are being proposed, and the closest code to what you're talking about pertains to inspections of multifamily.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gilda Dozier. I'm here to talk about the ordinance of multifamily apartment complex and the inspections. A little piggyback off of her inspections. I've been displaced since March the fourth, but I also moved into a complex Monday, and it's supposed to have been inspected by an inspector, which I, when I moved in and I used the machine, water went everywhere. The back door had a big crack. One of my grandkids' foot could have went into, but they repaired it. But, I mean, it's a lot. I mean, it's really a lot, and I would just really would like you guys to just think about the tax credit multifamily apartments for people that struggling and taking care of their grandkids. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Padilla. I'm with Smith Douglas Homes. We're a Woodstock-based home builder. We focus on building attainable for sale housing, have done a number of communities here in Cobb County and look forward to doing many more. Wanted to just talk about our concerns real quick with the section that deals with private streets. And first, I want to thank Jessica and her team for working with the Council for Quality Growth, with the HBA, to address many of the concerns that, that we had raised as an industry previous on, on an earlier draft. What I, I think I want to talk about a little bit is the language, and Jessica may have clarified it for me earlier, but there's still a little bit of discrepancy dealing with how this would address alleys, private easements, other non-traditional roadways. And you heard earlier today at your work session about the need for missing middle housing. And that is a type of housing that increasingly we and other builders are looking to construct, whether it's townhomes, whether it's cottage court product, homes that typically are going to utilize, in many cases, alleyways or, or non-traditional roadways for access to side loaded or alley loaded garages. As I read the current language in the code, it would make that very difficult to construct because they would have to be built to Cobb County CDOT standards, which, which would be, be impossible. I think Jessica's clarified that for me, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as, as something that could potentially be an issue. More broadly, I, I would encourage you, and, and this is something for a broader conversation, to look at potentially, how do we find ways for Cobb County to accept these roadways that are outside of CDOT specs? These are not, private roadways are not only for high-end luxury communities. We see more and more TND neighborhoods, cottage court neighborhoods, product that's evolving as the market evolves with, with more small, you know, small lot housing, fewer folks in, in that home who don't want a yard, who don't want something that is large to manage. As, as the product evolves, unfortunately, the zoning and the development codes have not quite caught up and kept up with it. So I would encourage you, as you look forward, especially as the UDO comes into play, to consider the opportunity for how Cobb County can take those non-traditional roadways and alleyways into its, into public management, because that is, is a cost for an HOA of a home, of a neighborhood where the homes are priced at three hundred fifty thousand or three hundred thousand or below can be quite a burden on a, on, on that homeowner to provide the annual maintenance for. But I thank you for your time, and again, thank Jessica and her staff for all the work they did with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Nguyen, and in reference to the audience, multifamily apartment complex inspection, I'm concerned about this part, being denied for, for assistant and fill out another application, you're being denied. In that area, we do need, we do need help in that area. Just don't know what else to say, but we do need help in that area and all the other parts of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. I am Mary Berry. I'm here today in support of my hardworking trash company, Trash Taxi. I want to express my intense opposition to the solid waste code change, Section 102. I'm a resident of Cobb County, live in the Acworth, near Burt Hickory and Mars Hill. I have been a customer of Trash Taxi since moving into my current home, which is about three years now. When I first signed up with them, the owner personally talked to me when he dropped off my bins and even gave me an extra recycling dumpster. He didn't even charge me an added fee for the extra recycling bin. Would I get this kind of personal service with a government contracted trash provider? No, I don't, I don't think so. I do not wish Cobb County to force me to use a government selected trash company. We know what happens to business when the government-
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Janina, if you can, yeah. Just want to make sure we can hear you. Go ahead.
We know what happens when the government gets involved, corruption, wasted funds, poor service, and a lot of bureaucracy. I'm extremely happy with my trash service from Trash Taxi. They provide prompt, punctual, and consistent quality service. I never have to ask myself, are they going to show up today? Are they going to forget my recycling? Will they try to throw my recycling in with the trash? No, I never have to worry about any of that. As a customer, I know they will be there on time and get the job done right the first time, unlike some of my unfortunate neighbors. Luckily, I do not have some of the problems my neighbors have encountered with their trash services, such as entire trash dumpster being thrown down into the back of the truck by the mechanical arm and having to run down the street bare feet while screaming at the driver of the truck to stop and bring back the bin, or having the bin left open in the rain, getting soaked with water, and finally, dumpsters being left out in the road causing others to swerve around them because there is not a worker on the back of the truck to place the bin back by the curb in the proper position. Some say having less trucks on the road will preserve the condition of the roads and it will eliminate wear and tear on the roads. In my opinion, this is not even a factor to consider at all. It's obvious to me Cobb County does not care, care about the condition of the roads. On a daily basis, myself and others are dodging horrible potholes, and the only wear and tear is on my car, not the roads. Where are all the taxpayers going, Cobb County? These taxes are certainly not going to the roads. Are the roads an indication the trash service Cobb County would give us under code change, Section 102? 102? If so, no thanks, I'll pass. In America, we have freedom, and I don't want my freedom to choose a business taken away. Some people thought it was unimportant, even laughable, to come to this meeting today. They think it's just trash, what's the big deal? But it is a big deal, and it is important when the government attempts to create a monopoly and limit our service, we should all be concerned. Eliminating a variety of locally run trash haulers will take away jobs and income from Cobb County, the workers and their families. Competition creates better products and better service. Cobb County let competition continue to give residents the best company by choice. I'm asking you to not bring back the waste code change, Section 102, throw it in the trash, and please do not recycle it.
I'm Hill Wright. First of all, I'd like to address on short-term rentals. I guess basically kind of keep it residential is my concern. You know, with investors coming in, they can buying up properties. They would like to turn these into hotels and all. It sounds like you've done some good things to, to maybe keep that from happening, but that's the biggest concern I have with it is, is that it's gonna, there's gonna be more and more pressure and to try to push envelope to, to do that and cause problems in our neighborhoods. So I appreciate that you're, you know, looking at this and taking it up. I just want to make sure that, you know, basically resident, our residential neighborhoods are residential. On the, I, I appreciate the, on the zoning portion, on the traffic study, I appreciate the board's direction on this. I think it's a good direction. The, from being involved in several zoning cases, I can tell you though, the one thing I'm concerned about is the, the number of trip generations, number that was discussed, I think needs to be a lot lower. When you're dealing with our neighborhoods, it's a different situation, and there are, and you can have egregious situations happen with, if, if the traffic study number is so high. I'd also like to see the, the date, go, days go back to thirty days, because it gives the community time to, to look at it. I think fifteen days does not give the community enough time. And all, the other thing is on, on the trash, you're talking about bringing that back in January. I, I would like to see that, that to be worked out with the haulers first, to see if there's even a, a need for a change. And before it's brought back, I'd like there to be town halls with the public and for the public to know well in advance what's being proposed before it's brought back. I don't want to get into another situation where, where at the last minute, we're all trying to learn about this and all, and all the confusion that creates. If a code impacts our neighborhood, there should be town halls. If it impacts our, our life, our private, our, our everyday life, there should be town halls to get input from us and all. Don't try to write things on your own. Talk to us, talk to the people in the community first before you do that, so that you know what our concerns are before you proceed. Don't wait, three minutes is not enough time to figure that out. And then finally, don't form secret committees that even Commissioner Gamble doesn't know about. Thank you.
Thank you all. My name is Sam Crenshaw. I live in District One. I'm a small business owner and a father of four. I did want to come in support of something that I haven't heard talked about tonight yet, but it's in 134, Article One. Some changes in favor of customary home occupations becoming slightly more lax. I am in favor of that as a small business owner and again, father of four. Anytime I can find to work at the house, be around the kids more is something that I'm always trying to do, so I can be more involved in their life and not worry about maintaining a lot of stuff off of property and just having a little more freedom with that. So I did want to voice my favor of that area there. I also wanted to speak briefly on the mandatory POA, HOA. There is a concern I have about running the risk of those taking control and potentially even money out of the homeowners in Cobb County to different corporations and property management companies outside of the county. I've heard of neighbors, different people I know that have been part of HOAs or POAs, and then all of a sudden that's been, well, we're gonna let another company come in and run this for us, and I just am concerned slightly that that would take money out of homeowners' hands here and take it outside of the county, and also control over some things going on in our own neighborhoods to companies outside of the county. And the last thing I did, want to speak briefly against the code enforcing automotive repair shops and the three cars per bay. I wanted to propose that possibly you look at maybe changing that wording to a percentage of parking on the property, maybe saying, you know, they're only allowed to have seventy-five percent of the parking on their property that they have available be used for that, just so that it's a little more fair to the different businesses that maybe have a larger property, maybe a little more even secluded. I know personally Jaceb Abney of Jay Abney Automotive, he's got a nice secluded property off of Stilesboro Road that he's got plenty of space off the road, not a whole lot of traffic concerns. And to limit him would really cut a lot of his business and the ways that he has purchased and set up his property to be able to handle the business that he is currently keeping in the county. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Verde, and I'm here to speak on the short-term rental amendment or code change. Myself, my husband, and my three boys, as well as my sister, of which I had just got custody of because my mom has terminal cancer, reside in our home in Weatherstone Parkway. Every day, I look at that home and I thank God that I'm able to live there. I actually found myself homeless at the age of nineteen. I wanted nothing more than to give my children the best opportunity available, so I chose a home here in East Cobb. The only way that we are able to afford that home is by short-term rentals. We live in the home with our three boys. Our boys help clean the rooms. Our boys interact with guests who tell them about their business, who tell them about what they're going through in life. And my boys are so culturally diverse that it is incredible to me. We house traveling nurses, as well as people who have fallen on hard times. I'm sure many people in this room have fallen on hard times because of one bad mistake. A lot of times, those people speak to my boys and tell them, hey, if I hadn't done this, I would not be in this situation. Currently, with the, and I might have misinterpreted it, but the way that the code is written, we're only gonna be allowed to have one rental per, per dwelling. Right now, we have two guest rooms that we are renting out separately. Allowing that to be in place will cause a lot of investors to actually to buy the homes, so they can rent the whole home. And which would actually be negative on the community, because it would just allow investors to come in, because they're the only people that are able to afford homes here in Cobb County. I'm sorry, I'm like really nervous. So doing that would allow a lot of people to come in and have party homes and homes that are not regulated. Forcing owners to reside in the home and allowing them to have this amount of people that fit in the home for the three hundred and ninety-five square foot would allow the owners to be there to regulate what's going on. I am there every day with my guests. My husband and I work from home, and we regulate everything that happens in our home. So I just want to ask today if we could do a pause- So I just want to ask today if we could do a pause on the short-term rental amendment or code change until we are a little bit more clear. And I want to thank everyone in this room for all their hard work for adding that regulation because stuff without regulation is not okay. And I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work because I know finding a regulation for something that doesn't even exist, and it's a huge business, a huge business chain, was so hard. That's all. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Donald Dupree, and I live in District 39 out in Riverside. And you was talking about this ordinance of inspecting the properties?
Yes, ma'am.
With the landlords inspecting them like before people move, before they sell? Is that what this subject was on?
Not necessarily before they sell. But you can speak and share your concerns. You can speak and share your concerns, but it's not necessarily before sale.
Well, I wanted to get to, I've been here, I've been moving around like for the last 20 years from place to place. I don't know how to say this, but it's like I can't settle one place because they sell out, Cobb County, they move me around. I mean, I'm getting farther and farther away from my family, and I'm just being shuffled too far away. And to these places, there's always some problems with them. It wasn't like this back, well, I don't know when, but it seemed like it's changed. Like Cobb County doesn't want me here. I get this feeling I'm not welcome here. Why I gotta be shifted way out of my area? I grew up in Marietta City in Cobb County, but now I can't even afford to find any place that available in Cobb County for me to live no more. So I'm just wondering, do I need to just, I don't want to leave Cobb County, my family's here. But what am I supposed to do? I mean, the places are getting horrendous, they just getting worse and it's getting worse. Each place I go to is like, there's always problems, the mo, the meadoo, it's just too many problems. And inspecting them before they sell, I don't know what's that gonna change anything? I don't understand it. I'm just too old for this anymore. I mean, I want to live, I wanted to stay in this county, but it's like this county don't want me to stay here. That's really sad. I hate that. I grew up in this city. I went to the theater right across the street, in the back door.
Hello, everyone. Hi, Chairwoman Cupid, and all Cobb County Commissioners, and everyone that's here in attendance. I thank you all for letting us come here and voice our concerns, and I appreciate your hard work and the help that you've given thus far with the evictions. I'm speaking in reference to the multifamily apartment complex inspections. Our community is concerned about tenants being displaced during the repairs. The landlords can come in and inspect and say that the apartment needs to be fixed, but the tenant won't be able to stay there. We are concerned that the tenant won't be able to stay there during these repairs. So it's a way of moving the tenants out, and where are they gonna go? And also, wait a minute, let me see. Okay, we feel that it would increase homelessness. Recently, there's been about, within the past two months, 10, at least 10 evictions of women and children. And then with the inspections, if the tenants don't have anywhere to go, that's going to add to the number of people that's already facing dealing with homelessness. I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I tried to type it so I wouldn't. And we're also concerned about how, of course, it would affect the schoolchildren. While these repairs are being made and the tenants aren't able to stay in their apartments, how will that affect the children going to school if the tenant has to move somewhere, maybe across town or somewhere, or stay in a hotel? We're really concerned about where they would be able to stay while this is taking place. Is more apartments gonna be made available? Is more housing gonna be built? Will it be staying in hotel, families staying in hotels? So that's our major concern about the ordinance, multifamily ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Chambers. I'm here as President of the Cobb Association of Realtors for 2022. And while I may be here in my official capacity as President, I'm actually here speaking on behalf of all of your constituents and anybody in Cobb County who owns personal property, because that's part of what we do, is we protect the personal property rights of individuals. Short-term rentals that comply with existing zoning should not hold a different set of standards than any other compliant usage of the property. If the underlying issue is multifamily usage of a single-family dwelling, enforce that particular ordinance. If the problem is noise or nuisance violations, enforce the laws on the books. If the problem is improper parking, disposal of trash, appearance of the property, laws on the books should be enforced before establishing new laws. Short-term rentals are needed in our community. As we heard somebody mention earlier, she houses travel nurses. You have insurance adjusters. You have people coming in for KSU graduations. There's a variety of reasons why short-term rentals are needed in our community. We see three particular problems with the current draft. First, local government requiring specific addresses to be identified as rental property of any type is specifically prohibited by state law. If you look at OCGA 367430, it reads in part, "No local government is authorized to perform investigations or inspections of residential rental property unless there is probable cause to believe there has been a violation or violations of applicable codes. And in no event may a local government require the registration of a residential rental property." License, whatever you want to call it, whatever terminology you want to put on it, requiring somebody to register their property in any form or fashion is against Georgia law. An unequal enforcement of rules or requiring a different set of rules for equally-zoned properties is problematic under the equal protection clause of the state constitution. When you are setting different rules for rental properties that are short-term versus ones that may have a six-month lease or one-year lease, that is in violation of the equal protection clause. Providing any agent to manage the property on behalf of the owner that is not in compliance with Chapter 40, Title 43 of the Official Code of Georgia would essentially be facilitating and encouraging the unlicensed practice of real estate. I heard somebody mention earlier tonight that if they don't comply, that Cobb County is going to strip them of their right for a short-term rental. I think that is a very slippery slope. I'm not sure that Cobb County wants to get into the business of taking away the personal property rights of the residents of our county. Thank you.
We have allowed applause, but just ask again that we don't have any vocal outbursts. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Camille Robinson. I am, just want to thank the Commissioners and the Board Chair for all your efforts that you do make every day. My reason for being up here is I'm hearing a common theme. One, my initial reason for coming up here is for short-term rentals for Section 78 for the residential, and to the points that a lot of people made, I'm seeing a real common theme here between that and the multifamily rental housing. You have residential people in Cobb County today that do rent like their rooms to people, and I've heard stories where people have diverse situations where they're bringing people into their homes that they normally wouldn't have. Where I feel that the theme is, is you've got these large investors and large corporations that are kind of driving this whole narrative. And when you look at it, these people that are opening their homes and wanting to rental, rent some of their rooms, it could be some of these people that are being displaced. And these people may have an affordable option, whereas if you've got these large corporations coming in, I heard in the, in the opening remarks, initially it was like, well, we're not gonna say one adult per 390 square feet, but one certificate. Yet then in the next sentence and in the next breath, it said a maximum occupancy must be posted. To me, that's speaking like corporations, investors that are not, do not have an individual's best interest at heart. So I would ask that that be tabled and really have some town hall to really thoughtfully approach it, I think would be the best course of action. And then the next one I heard earlier was around the auto parking ordinance for some of these private business owners. I mean, to me, I mean, I go to a German auto repair shop for an older car that I have, and for me, they have limited space as it is. And I think that that needs to be more thoughtfully looked at because you are putting a burden on these private business owners that have been in, been in the business for many years. So really thoughtfully look at that and maybe table that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Tremblay, and I come to you as a veteran and successful business owner, husband, and father of three beautiful boys, ages five to nine. I stand before you to request the Board of Commissioners to delay the vote concerning short-term rental code changes. To be clear, I think that I can speak for many short-term rental owners as we want code regulations around short-term rentals to remove the ambiguity of the current code county codes, of the Cobb County codes surrounding these topics. That said, the version that was proposed on August 31st was fair all around for both the community and short-term rental owners. I don't have time to get into the details, but in short, the recent changes that have been made, have been made in such a way to prevent homeowners from effectively supplementing their income using short-term rentals. From what we've heard here today, homeowners who do not have short-term rentals have had an opportunity to advise and make these changes happen that are currently being presented. But as a short-term rental owner, I have attempted to come to many Commissioner meetings, as many Commissioner meetings as possible. I have scheduled appointments twice with my District Commissioner and yet have been, have yet been able to speak with her due to her busy schedule. I have called every department in the county looking to advise and be involved in this process, and I've yet had the chance. Without short-term rentals, me and my family will most likely have to file bankruptcy and will likely have to relocate out of Cobb County due to COVID and inflation issues. I am simply just asking that the code changes today be delayed until we have had an opportunity to speak on these factors. Again, these short-term rental codes that have been proposed will only empower larger businesses to come in and do Airbnb. Us as homeowners, where we have space that we have to be able to supplement our income, that's all we're trying to do so that we can provide for our children and our families in a county that is massively expensive that we are just trying to live in so bad, and we are working our butts off to do. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Jill Flam, and I am Vice President of East Cobb Civic Association. Thank you for all your hard work on Version 2 of the code. However, we still have some recommendations on two sections of the code. Each of the members of the Board of Commissioners, the county clerk, as well as staff have been given a copy of our recommendations for the record. Section 78-407, short-term rentals. While Version 2 of the code is an improvement, the problem with a sports team renting a house, small number of adults, large number of kids, still has not been addressed. As this has already happened, we feel it is a relevant question. Perhaps in Section H7, that addresses the advertising and posting of the number of adults allowed in the short-term rental, a limit of the maximum number of persons, adults and children could be added to that section. Finally, Section 134-192, summary of uses. We bring this up again. Despite what Ms. Gwynne says in her emails, this zoning chart is used by the public. It is causing confusion. The request to update it was given to the BOC and staff in a timely fashion, and we recommend that this be updated now. In the past, the county has advertised parts of the code that inadvertently were forgotten in the code amendments and completed the hearings the next month. Why could we not do this with this section? This could be handled with two meetings in October. We think that inconsistencies should be corrected when they are found, just as what was done with Section 134-162 this go-around. This section needs to be fixed now, not in a couple of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's James McCreary. I'm here to address Chapter 78, short-term rentals. We've spoken previously about the concept of transit hoteling and what defines the difference between a family just trying to make some ends meet and families building out in a way that is against the intent of the original code, to just build out based on 390 feet and keep building and building and building such that we have such transient neighborhoods that we, we don't, we don't know what the stability of our neighborhood is, we don't know what the safety of our children is, and we don't know, you know, basically, who was there last. The new changes regarding Section E3 that takes it back to being accountable for 134-1 or in accordance with 134-1, after review, we think this is probably the best option for you for, to give you a firm foot to stand on from both sides, that it's not asking anything other than for someone coming into a single-family dwelling, platted neighborhood to act in accordance with what is the governing rules for the single-family dwellings that are already there. I think it's that plain and simple. So if we look at, look at that definition there, when you were saying they must act in accordance with the occupancy, we're saying single-family dwelling unit, it's already on the books. It's not a matter of whether it's convenient or not, it's already on the books. It's, it's there. A single-family dwelling unit consists of one or more rooms which are arranged, designed, or used as living quarters for one family, including one unrelated adult, the Brady Bunch with Alice, got it? Or two unrelated adults and their children and their grandchildren. That's the construct of, of the system there. Within that, if you had five adults living there, you need to ensure that they have 390 feet, square feet of living space to accommodate that. It's, it's a matter of convenience, not something to be bastardized the way it was written before and say that you need 390 feet for each adult. And by the way, we're gonna build out a 7,700 square-foot house and put in 14 rooms and start renting them. That's what we're trying to do. For the longest time, people have said, why are businesses allowed to come in and run in a residential neighborhood? And the reason is, is because we already had defined what a single-family dwelling was. What we didn't have defined is what the short-term rental was. It was fuzzy. It was, I'm gonna open a fishing business, but I'm gonna do it in a state park, you know? No, there's already rules on the state park to do that. You're welcome to have that fishing business. Nothing is against, and you're fully protected on that, I believe, to say, short-term rental people can't rent one, can't rent 14 rooms. It's their American dream, it's their right, it's their investment.
Excuse me, sir, your time is running.
Thank you.
My name's Craig Harfoot, and I'm here to speak on the cars. With parts scarce during COVID, you know, even collision places, you know, if you wanted your car repaired, they don't have the parts, it takes weeks. So yeah, they got more cars on the lot, so that one should be tabled. But all of them that you've been discussing should be tabled for But all of them that you've been discussing should be tabled for one reason. The main players with the input in this are Council for Quality Growth. And then subsets, Taylor English Decisions, a lobbying firm, works with them too. And then you got Taylor English Duma, nice name, sounds like Russians, but it's a law firm. And anyhow, the, the public, I guess we need to hire them to get anything done here because forever in this county, even when I first came here and ran, 2005, against Olins, Council for Quality Growth existed, and they got their way with zoning all the time. And they were lobbyists. They come up here and they didn't even identify themselves as lobbyists. And the stuff about the unified code, it needs to be totally shelved and broken down piece by piece. And tonight gave good examples about people trying to supplement. And ultimately, Council for Quality Growth is a consortium of bankers, developers, and related businesses that all they want to do is make money. So gentrification, that's their business. They're going to run out all the low-rent apartments. I mean, you, they did it on the Franklin Road, there were a lot of apartments there. Now there's a big children's healthcare, and you made it all nice, but there's no housing. And that was in Marietta. So, and when I came up in Atlanta, I worked across from Westview Cemetery. We had public housing. But then they decided that was bad because basically the Crips and the other gangs started in those housing projects. But then they built post-type properties on them. And there's your flight. And, and then basically, the worst housing is the cheapest housing. So this is a huge problem, and if you keep doing better and more expensive and interest rates, like I said, you know, real estate values, you drop it to zero, and suddenly you think it's all worth more. But all you're doing is sucking every dime out of everybody's paycheck because, hey, we look at payments in this country, we don't look at homeownership. So please slow down on this thing and take it slow because it's going to be worse.
Thank you, Mr. Harfoot, your time is up.
And I'm sitting here, you know, we certainly want to give people the opportunity to share their thoughts during public hearings. Our code does provide for us to address comments that may be viewed as offensive. And so when you make a blanket comment about sounds like Russia, we may have employees here or residents here who could be from there. And so I just want us to be mindful of when we refer to nationalities, even though you might not take personal offense, that you could be offending your neighbor here. So I do want to address that and be sensitive to all nationalities that could be represented within this county.
Good evening, Monica Delancey, District Four. I'm here to speak about the multifamily apartment complexes inspections. I do want to thank all the speakers that came up earlier, even though it took a minute to get to what they were speaking about, or they was talking about evictions, all relative, all relative. I can assure you that right now, before you even start the ordinance, there are five apartment complexes that when you go walk in them, you're going to probably go ask everybody to start packing their bags and get ready to move someplace. Okay? So we have to look at that and also question, when are we going to start building new apartment complexes that, that's for essential workers? That's for people that's on disability? That's on people that are using section eight vouchers so they don't find themselves going to an older apartment complex? And like they said, because they don't want to lose their voucher, they're taking apartment complex so they can have some place to live. So again, it's all relative. And just last year, the Legacy of West Cobb had to move out, I think about 40 residents while they had to do some repairs, and some of them, they had to move to other counties. So now their kids can't even go to the same school in Cobb County, right? And in over in Atlanta, there's an apartment complex that's, the entire apartment complex had to be moved out, I believe it's Forest Cove, and some of those residents ended up in Lithonia, okay? So we're going to have to address all this at the same time. And then as we're addressing about these inspections of apartment complexes, let's talk about how these apartment complexes are doing business. They're not renewing people leases just because they have a personal problem with that tenant. But they don't live on that property, the tenants don't have no problem with them. So why isn't someone that could come in as a landlord that's not even there for not even a good year, come in and tell people they're going to renew their lease? And so therefore, we're talking about doing good business, we're going to talk about renters' bill of rights, and rent, 10 renters' bills of rights. And I'd like for you to take a copy of it. I want you to, when you're doing your inspections, evaluate how many leases were not renewed. Include that in inspection. Also include inspection, who makes decisions why leases are not renewed, okay? Let's talk about the demographics of these properties when you're doing your inspections. Also, meet with representatives of the residents at least four times a year and work with existing coalitions. Don't try to exclude them because you know they know what's going on in the community. Then you have to have the value, the right to organize, all right? So, so if apartment complex organizing, the landlord should not be disturbed, should be just look, look down upon that. First come, first served. It's too many times I'm hearing how people are going to apply for apartments, they're not, they're not even, they're told to be pulling the waitlist, but soon as the manager friend come up in there, that person's put the top of the list. So therefore, it needs to be transparent for how they're doing business and get people approved. Renters can provide suitable repairs, because let me tell you something, the maintenance team can't handle the repairs that's going on right now. So the renters can provide suitable repairs and certify.
Ms. Delancey, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay, thank you very much. And also write a first.
Excuse me, I'm, thank you, we have your sheet, we have your sheet, thank you. Are there any additional speakers for this public hearing? Not seeing any additional speakers, the public hearing is closed. Director Gwynne, if you can approach, please. Before you do that, let me just check in with Commissioners. Commissioners, are you ready to go over the code amendments, or do you need a break? Everybody's good?
Okay, are we going to do them all separate?
We'll do them one at a time. Okay, thank you. If you can help take us through the code one at a time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so yes, I've separated them out one at a time here. The first chapter would be chapter two, giving the Code Enforcement Division authority to enforce the multifamily rental.
Okay, thank you. There has been some vigorous discussion with respect to this, and so I'm going to go Commissioner by Commissioner to see if they have any comments with respect to this before we vote on this particular amendment. And I'll start with Commissioner Gambrell.
No comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Certainly, there were a couple of concerns that have, that have come up consistently. So just asking you, with regards to the enforcement of this code, what has been contemplated for potential displacements? Is that something that's, is that, that's something that each apartment rental, that particular multifamily group would actually take on on themselves? It's not something that they coordinate with the county on?
That's a great question, and I think we heard a lot of good feedback. And just to preface my comments here, the impetus for bringing this code forward, and this was a Commissioner-sponsored proposal, I believe was the, the public comment that we had received over the last several months regarding the conditions of some of the rental, rental housing in the county. And understanding that we've heard from a number of tenants who have expressed that landlords have not been responsive to their complaints and to their concerns about their unlivable conditions, about their properties, about their units not being up to code. And right now, somebody could call my office, they could call the Community Development Office and tell us, "I, I have concerns about my, my apartment. I feel like my property manager is not being responsive. Will you please come out and look at it?" And we can do that. We have, we have a nuisance abatement coordinator who does that right now, and we have a, the board has funded a housing complaints coordinator in this budget year that would be a full-time person dedicated solely to that. We're still going to have that. But also understanding that there are a number of residents out there who may feel concerned about raising that concern to their tenant or to their landlord or calling us, fearing retaliation. So the attempt, the, the intent of this code is really to kind of get out ahead of some of that and be a little bit more proactive, ensuring that our multifamily units here in Cobb County are up to code for property maintenance as well as life safety and fire codes, and that they're a safe, habitable place for the residents of Cobb County. So with that being said, 25% of the units would have to be inspected per year. So that means each unit would be inspected at least once every four years. Ultimately, it's up to the property manager to decide which 25% they're going to do this year, as long as all 100% are inspected a minimum of every four years. Also, if there are things that are non-compliant, you know, or things where the boxes aren't quite checked, they can submit that to us and then work with the building official. The building official can give them up to a year to bring that unit into compliance as long as it's not something that's potentially life-threatening. So I think that's where we hopefully eliminate some of the concerns about displacement. The code itself doesn't contemplate displacement, but I think by only requiring 25% a year, given the property owner, the, the manager, the right to determine which ones they're going to submit, as long as they're all, they all come in in that four-year period, allowing for time for them to come into compliance, hopefully that'll alleviate some of those concerns and ensure that people will be able to stay in their units. And ultimately, you know, what we're looking for is not, is it the latest and greatest appliances? We're making sure, we want to ensure that these units are maintained to code so that they're safe and habitable.
Thank you. And just my question.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, first of all, I think it is important, and is code already, that they have to meet fire code and safety standards when they're built and when they're, you know, come in for anything. So would, would our code enforcement be doing these inspections or abatement?
No, ma'am. We would not be doing the inspections, so, and you all understand the number of inspectors that I have and the resources that we have here in the county. So the way the code is written, it would actually be the responsible, responsibility of the property manager or property owner to get a certified inspector to conduct those inspections. In order to be certified to do it, that inspector, if they want to participate in the multifamily inspection program here in Cobb and to conduct those inspections, would have to be approved through our office, which means they would have to come and show that they've got the appropriate certifications that are spelled out in the code, that they, they have the requisite knowledge and skills to be able to conduct these inspections. So once they've provided that documentation to us, then they'll be on the list of certified inspectors, and that would be somebody that a property manager would be able to, to contract with to perform those inspections. Then they would conduct the inspections based on the checklist of, here are all the things that Cobb County requires you to comply with, and they would have to submit that form back to us to show that documentation that is been done.
So it wouldn't be our responsibility?
No, ma'am.
And then if they are, if the repairs are extensive enough that they would have to move or couldn't stay there, wouldn't that be the responsibility of the landlord to find them another apartment or place, or put them up in a hotel, for that matter, if they're, if they're making the renovations or repairs?
I, I wouldn't venture to speak to that from a legal standpoint. I think really that's between the landlord and the tenants. Hopefully, they would do the right thing. But again, also, the expectation is that these units should be maintained a livable standard, that it shouldn't require someone moving out to be able to get that unit livable.
Right, but again, I'm just saying, that's not.
That's not a responsibility, no, ma'am.
The county's responsibility to, to do that. But it, it could happen if they're that, if they have to redo the floor or something major and tear up the whole, a wall or something, I don't know. But we're just making sure that they're livable and in good standing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Jessica, for, for working with us and bringing forth this amendment, which I sponsored. But we received numerous complaints during public comments and emails about deplorable conditions of some of the apartment communities. Insect and rodent infestation, raw sewage backed up in kitchen sinks, mold and mildew throughout the units. These are conditions that people, regardless of income, should be subjected to. Appeals were made to the Board of Commissioners to help, to get involved, to help fix and resolve these concerns. Well, we listened, right? We're often accused of not listening, but we listened. The conditions of the apartments pose a public health issue. And as a Commissioner, I am obligated, it is my responsibility to address those issues. The proposed code will hold landlords accountable. That's what we often hear, that landlords, thank you, that landlords are increasing rents without making the necessary repairs to the units. I understand the concern that with those repairs, there may be an increase in rent. But people cannot continue to have raw sewage in their sinks, in their kitchen sinks. There's concern, or there has been concern with respect to retaliation for tenants that report landlords, but with this proposed code, that will help to eliminate and relieve some of that fear and anxiety because now, as the county, we're taking on that responsibility. This code is also designed to help reduce the flipping of properties. So what's happening along Riverside Corridor, for example, we have investors, and at one point, I believe they're, were primarily from Canada, so we have foreign investors, they come in, they purchase the property. Well, when they realize how much work needs to be done, they sell it off to the next unsuspecting buyer. The issue there is, the county code is not written as such where the landlord has to make repairs before the property is sold, right? We talk about property rights, right? It is not the county's responsibility, nor do we have the power to enforce a private landlord to make repairs to an apartment. Some would describe that even as an overreach. What this code will do, it will help eliminate the number of repairs, and they can be very vast, they can be very vast, and they can be very expensive repairs. But with this code, that would reduce the issue of flipping the properties, right? And having the next buyer spend an awful lot of money to have it repaired. What that will also do is provide stability to a lot of the tenants. I heard today and at other meetings that landlords, new landlords come in and they don't renew leases, et cetera, et cetera. If we have systems in place and we have accountability in place, and again, this is the nature of this amendment, if we have the accountability in place, then we can reduce that behavior. It's not going to go away, we understand that. But what we are attempting to do within our power, which is obviously limited when it comes to private property, but what we can do within our power is start by holding landlords accountable. Now, there was a reference made earlier regarding an apartment community in, in Marietta and Smyrna, the Legacy, in District Four. Deidre and I, my, my assistant, we visited the property last year, and it was in horrible, horrible condition. We walked the property with a new investor, and there was raw sewage, the floor was missing. We went inside, there was raw, raw sewage just floating underneath the apartments. Tenants were displaced, but what he did is he moved tenants into vacant units within the community. Some residents, for whatever reason, opted not to do that. But for those that opted not to stay in the community, he provided a $500 moving stipend. He also paid for the truck, moving truck. He also had his, his staff to assist in finding other available apartments for, for the residents. I can't, we can't promise or say that people will not be displaced, and we hope that that's not the case. But what I can tell you, if there is no measure of accountability, at some point, that will happen. But what I can tell you, if there is no measure of accountability, at some point, that will happen, because the conditions will continue to get worse and worse and worse. So we can get ahead of some of these conditions and try to make sure that they don't get worse to the point where people are displaced. And there was a question regarding if the landlord would be responsible in the moving expenses. From what I've come to learn with the apartment community that I shared with you guys a short while ago, is that if the owner received tax credits for that apartment community, federal tax credits, they are obligated to help with the moving expenses of the tenants that live within that community.
Within the compliance period.
Within that compliance period, right? But that's all I had on the multifamily.
Thank you, Commissioner. I fully support this code amendment, and I support Commissioner Sheffield's comments. This board has heard numerous comments, as she shared, with respect to habitability of apartments, with some of the same speakers that are asking us not to move this forward, asking us to be held accountable for improving the livability of the apartments. And so we are very much in a catch-22, very much so. And I don't say this to look down on anyone or to disregard the circumstance, because what the residents are telling us today is a very real circumstance. I think a comment was shared here today. The lowest rental value apartments will probably be the apartments in greatest disrepair. So the ones that are most affordable are probably the ones that need the most work. And so where you may have desired to have a livable condition, what's the point of having a livable condition if you can't live? And this is our challenge. It was easy for us to want a certain standard, but when you're the one that needs to keep a roof over your head, you're probably going to make different decisions. And so I'm up here very sensitive to that. And I recognize the quandary that this board is in. As Commissioner Sheffield shared, I don't think we can be responsible if we are not responsive. As a commissioner of District Four, I had residents tell me they were being moved into units with no stove, with no fridge. We just can't allow these to continue, because you pointed the finger and said, you live in Cobb County, you expect and deserve better, and we agreed. And this helps us to get to that standard. I think there's been some remarks of whether or not inspections equals evictions. The two are different things. There are circumstances where I've worked with tenants where their apartment has been repaired while the tenant has still been living in the apartment. This happens on frequent occasion. The unfortunate reality is, when we were experiencing the eviction crisis during the pandemic, we found that there are clauses that have been written in some of the rental agreements that do provide that if the renovation were to last more than 30 days, that that resident can be displaced. But that is happening irrespective of any decision that we make today. And that gets to that landlord-tenant relationship, and it's very important to look at your lease. It's very difficult to work with families that are in that circumstance. We are not here today to delve into that landlord-tenant relationship. That is a state matter. What we are doing here today is what we can do within our purview, and that is to address habitability. That is to address the issues of public health that Commissioner Sheffield shared. But I, you know, I support this knowing there could be some adverse consequence for a landlord in making repairs, because repairs cost money. And the more repairs they have to make, those costs do somehow get transferred over to the tenant. And so I can't say that there couldn't be that consequence. It's our hope that that would not be today. But I can't see how we cannot be responsive to the issues that have been shared, not only meeting after meeting, but year after year. These issues have been brought, we've been in meetings in communities about this several times. So my ask, you know, our board would be to support the commissioners that propose this code amendment, for us to continue to do what we can to work with families who are being displaced. And we know from the many comments that we've had up here, we have not been able to help every family. But we did have a presentation today to learn that through funding that we received through the federal government, we have helped over 3,800 families to the tune of over $9,000 per family to be able to stay in a property. And we have additional funds to try to help as many families as possible. So, you know, we are going to do what we can to make sure people have a place to live, but we want people to have a safe and healthy place to live. And this code is going to help us get there. So with that, commissioners, I move that we approve.
Chairwoman, if you don't mind, just, I want to make sure we get from Ms. Gwen. The effective date, you spoke about it in a different effective date for this one. Is this January 1st, 2023, or?
No, that was for Chapter 78. For Chapter 18, this would be effective with the 2024 renewal cycle, and that's what's in the code. And I would recommend, Chair and Board, as you're considering a motion, perhaps it would be most appropriate to start with action on Chapter 18 prior to Chapter 2, because Chapter 2 is only relevant assuming that Chapter 18 is adopted.
Thank you. So commissioners, I move that we approve Chapter 18, as has been revised per the code amendment revisions that were shared with each one of us, with revisions being in Chapter, excuse me, Chapter 18, Section 364, Section 365, 366, 367, and 368.
The effective date would be January 1st of 2024, when the new business licenses would be issued, correct? So just to clarify on the timing.
I'm sorry, Jessica, can we get a second on that motion for discussion?
Second.
Thank you. All right, continue.
All right, just so we're clear on the time and kind of understanding how the business license renewal season starts. Business licenses are good from January 1st through December 31st, our occupational tax certificate. Good January 1st through December 31st. So the renewals for that go out usually about October 1st, is when we start saying, like, we're getting, next week, we'll send out the notifications that say, hey, it's time to renew your occupational tax certificate, your business license for 2023. And so to say that this is going to be effective January 1st of 2023, it's just not possible for them to get 25% of those units inspected and submitted to us. But to give them a year between now and the next renewal cycle, which will start next October with occupational tax certificates that are effective January 1st of 2024, would give them adequate time to conduct those first round of inspections.
So are the apartment complexes going to be notified on their business license that this inspection process will start?
Yes, ma'am. We will, and again, having that time between will give us plenty of time to work with industry organizations, the Metro Atlanta Apartment Associations and what have you, and also to reach out to all of our multifamily property owners and to let them know well in advance what the expectation is and what they're going to need to look for, because they'll want to go ahead and start right away. They can do it anytime next year and be eligible for the 2024 renewal.
Are there any other questions? There's a motion and a second. Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. We will now then go back to Chapter 2, which is related to Chapter 18. Chapter 2 adds and refers to the multifamily rental housing inspection program. With that, commissioners, I move that we approve Chapter 2 as presented in the original code amendment package.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that we take a break. I need a break. Yes, we'll take a 10-minute break, please, and come back at 9:10. Thank you. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this September 27, 2022. We are in the middle of going through the code amendments proposed for 2022, and I am going to turn things back over to our Community Development Director.
All right, thank you, Chair. So the next item is Chapter 54, and this is pertaining to the permits for outdoor events with the Fire Marshal's Office.
Thank you. Again, I will just ask commissioners, do you have any questions or revisions to this code? Seeing none, I move that we approve the code as has been presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Okay. And the next one, I expect, will warrant a little bit more discussion. Chapter 78, Section 407, this is the short-term rentals. As a reminder, and of course, you've had all the benefit of the public comment this evening, as a reminder, a few of the things that were added for things that you all may want to give some additional consideration to, or if you want to take another look at the penalties. Also, additional consideration to if you would like to limit short-term rental certificates to one short-term rental certificate per dwelling unit. And also, I ask that we consider an effective date of January 1, 2023 for this one.
Okay. Same as before, I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Gambrell, and we'll go commissioner by commissioner.
Thank you. As presented by Wendy Chambers regarding to the OCGA 367430, was this taken into consideration when the short-term rental code was written?
This has been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office with understanding of that code, and I don't know if the County Attorney's Office would like to add anything to that.
So I guess my question is, is if this code is existent, why didn't we write the short-term rental just to supplement what this code didn't address?
I don't think I'm sure.
Well, I understand, this was, this is what was presented to us today.
Can you tell us the code? Is it state code?
Yes, it's 367430, OCGA 367430.
Okay.
And Commissioner, what I can say is that we are aware, I know that we've also raised that question to the County Attorney's Office in the past months, as we've looked at this three times at this point, we're aware of that code. The code that's being put forward this evening is very much in line with what's been adopted at other jurisdictions throughout the state and also throughout the region. It's also one that's been supported by the Short-Term Rental Owners Association of Georgia. They have worked alongside us in preparing this document. We, they were here the last time we presented this and spoke in favor of it. We sent the latest and greatest draft to them, they looked at it, and they're not here this evening. So I just want to be clear that this is in line with the current best practices in the region and in the state for short-term rentals.
Well, I understand that, but again, this is directly out of here, and in no event may a local government require the registration of residential rental property. So I guess how, I guess this is a question for the county attorney. Again, how can we present this code when the state law specifically says we cannot do this?
This is a business license. This is not a registration, it's a business license. We're able to keep track of that.
I have no more questions for this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Most of my questions were addressed with regards to the changes. I did think there was one point that was brought up about having an owner that lives in on the property. Had that been explored?
That has not been explored, if that's something that the Board of Commissioners wishes to consider. I know that, in my experience, most often at a short-term rental, you're not going to have the property owner there while you're renting the unit, but if that's something that the Board of Commissioners would like to put out there as a consideration to include in the code, then that's certainly up for discussion.
Okay.
Is that something you'd like to add, Commissioner?
I mean, if it hasn't been explored, it's kind of hard to determine the negative harm that might be associated with doing something like that.
My recommendation, Commissioner, and just, I just want to say across the board, and I know I've probably said this to each of you at some point individually, but also currently, we have nothing. My recommendation is let's move forward with a code that's in line with best practices throughout the state and the region. That reflects, you know, it's something that we've had feedback, and we've seen from the public comments today, we have people who are concerned that it's too restrictive, we have people who are concerned that it's not restrictive enough, so I think we're kind of in the middle right now. We've had feedback from both sides. My recommendation would be let's move forward with something at this point that's in line with common practice throughout the region, and if we find out a year from now, if we determine that it's not achieving the goals of the commissioners in enacting this, and we need to put additional restrictions on, I think we can always bring it back at that point.
Yeah, I think that would be too soon to add something if it hasn't been reviewed yet, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Broll?
I'm going back to what Commissioner Richardson was asking about the property owner living there, because there are some that live in the home and rent it out. So is, are they counted as the number of people there to our dwelling code?
Yes, ma'am, because these are still single-family residences, so just the, by virtue of having a short-term rental certificate does not make these short, or did not make these single-family residences exempt from any portion of our zoning. They're still subject to the same requirements of our zoning code for any single-family residence.
Okay. And, and this is in compliance with our Chapter 134 on Dwelling Code now?
Yes, ma'am, it directly references it.
It's just that now it will include renters 30 days or less, short-term rentals for 30 days or less, whereas, you know, the permanent side has to receive a lot for additional unrelated or family and outside.
Correct, it's still subject to all the same requirements as our current single-family residential code.
Okay, and the parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there were a couple of things that were thrown out that we need to discuss to see if there's a consensus to add. On page 3, 2C.
Sorry, can you?
It's a sworn statement from the applicant that any applicable homeowners' association or property owners' association has been notified of the application. It's at the bottom of the page.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we also, it was suggested, it suggested that we add notification to adjacent neighbors if they're not, not all subdivisions have an HOA. So I don't know if there's consensus to add notification to their neighbors, adjacent neighbors or not. And then we also, on page 5, talked about penalties to increase the fines, and I know that by law, we can't go over $1,000 per violation, correct?
That's what we're advised by Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, can we take your recommendations one at a time?
Number 2C on page 3, the last, I'm asking if there's any, if there's support to add notification to adjacent neighbors, because not everybody's in an HOA.
Definitely, and I'm hearing yes from Commissioner Richardson, I'm seeing Commissioner Sheffield nod, Commissioner Gambrell.
My only question is, does this need to be its own separate, so make it D?
Okay, I would concur, we can add that as a separate clause. How do we define adjacent? Is it just neighbors to the right or left? Is it also in the front and rear of the property?
I would, for zoning, if I can interject here, it's 1,000 feet, so could we just use what we use for zoning?
No. Well, in zoning, they do have to give notification to anyone within 1,000 feet.
Correct.
But my understanding of adjacent is if it borders their property, both sides and the rear.
Right, that's what I would say is both sides and the rear, and one thing that I want to be careful about here is notification and understanding that giving notice, and we can, we can ensure that that happens if that's the will of the board, but also that there would be the understanding that notification doesn't give your neighbor the right to object if you meet all the requirements of the code.
I mean, they can't, they can't make that decision, but they, they need, if they're not in an HOA, they need to let their surrounding neighbors know that they're renting out their house.
Think HOA or not, I would support.
C gives them.
Excuse me, if we can keep the comments down in the audience, please, thank you.
C gives notice to the HOA.
Yes.
This would give notice to adjacent neighbors.
Not in lieu of, but in addition to.
Okay.
And if that's the desire of the board, if there's consensus on the board, then we can certainly incorporate that into the code. I just don't want to give neighbors a false understanding that they would be able to object to it under the code, if all of the requirements are met. But again, we're happy to add that if that's the direction of the board.
Okay. Yes, if it's similar, I think Commissioner Broll had another recommendation.
Oh, no, this is on the heels of that, so if we move forward with providing notification, if in the event this home no longer serves as a short-term rental, would the residents would also need to be notified that it's no longer a short-term rental?
I think that would be very difficult to enforce, because if someone stops doing it, or they sell their property and it's no longer a short-term rental, they're probably not going to think, oh, I need to let my neighbor know that I'm not going to do it, and as the county, it's going to be, we just don't really have the resources to go out there and make sure that everybody is notified whenever the house next door isn't a short-term rental anymore, so that would be my.
Now, I just wanted to know what the other side of that request was.
To this proposed change, you made a point about not giving a false sense of being able to reject it. It's primarily because the HOA and the POA, they may have things within their covenant where they could actually reject it.
Correct.
And so, okay.
Yes.
So that's a distinction that we're trying to drive there.
Correct, absolutely.
Commissioner Gambrell?
Do we also want to then further clarify that this notice is only given when they apply for the business license, because otherwise, or are we looking at them having to notify the neighbors for each rental?
For each one?
Oh, that's good.
What do you mean for each?
So for each, they, they have to make an application?
You mean if somebody comes in one weekend and then a different, no.
Yes.
Just notice that they are operating an Airbnb or a short-term rental.
So would we want to do that when they make their application for their business license?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing for the short-term rental certificate.
How do you suggest they provide notification?
Well, if they have to give a sworn statement that any applicable homeowners' association or property owners' association has been notified of the application, then they could bring in a petition or something that they circulated to their adjacent neighbors. Not a petition, but a sworn statement that they signed.
And perhaps we could write into the code there for D, that written notification of the application shall be provided to adjoining properties, and that copies of that notification shall be provided to the Business License Division with the application for the short-term rental certificate.
They could mail it and have proof of the mailing labels like they do, we do in zoning.
Right.
Another suggestion?
Just the other, under penalties, number I, 7I on page 5. The first violation, 500, second, within a 12-month period is 750, and the maximum we can do per violation is 1,000, correct?
Correct.
So is there a consensus to increase those fines?
What would be your suggestion?
In earlier discussions with Jessica, the recommendation was that the $500 for the first fine would be okay, but to consider doubling the 500 to 1,000, so make the second fine $1,000 versus 750.
Is there any discussion regarding that?
And that's within a 12-month period.
Right.
I'm actually kind of comfortable with the fine settings as they are, just because of the diversity of where we find short-term rentals.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Because of the different, like, the different demographics of where short-term rentals might exist, I'm actually fine with the fines, but, you know, if, if we think doubling it, I think 750 kind of makes the point, because it's per, per night. Or sorry, that's the operational, it's 500 per night, but the 750, I think, covers the penalty point.
Well, if they have two violations within a year, that's, I mean, I think, well, I don't have a problem with the second one being 1,000. I mean, the first one, if they're not in compliance within another 12-month period, then.
If I can ask a question to Jessica. So with the first fine of $500, what is the time allotted to coming to compliance before the second fine? Or it may just be two separate issues?
Right. So to be clear here, there are a couple of different types of violations that we're dealing with here. This, number one here, where it talks about the 500, and then the 750, and then the revocation, that's for properties that have, that have a short-term rental certificate. Somebody that's come through and gotten their certificate. So perhaps they have a tenant or a occupant who comes in, they have a big party, it's lots of noise, parking everywhere, they complain, the short-term rental agent doesn't address it. At that point, they would be assessed a fine. So that really is something that's really more of an instant-by-instant type thing, or an occurrence-by-occurrence type thing. The other type of penalty that we have here is two on page six. And this speaks to a short-term rental property that's determined to be operating without the short-term rental certificate. So they're just out there doing it, they don't have the certificate. Then it's $500 for, and each day that it's rented overnight without that certificate is a separate violation. So if they don't have a certificate and we find that they've rented that unit for three nights, then each of those counts as a separate violation. So it would be $1,500 potentially that they could be fined. So it's really two different, two different types of fines that we're dealing with here.
So is that the majority?
I'm in support of Commissioner Richardson's recommendation of the 500 and 750 as well. I think 500 is fairly steep. And hopefully that point a signal. It's all a matter of relativity. Some people, $500 is a lot easier to pay than others. If you look at the cross-section of demographics, I would concur in being comfortable with what we have.
Commissioner Gamble, are you going to weigh in? We have a two-to-two tie. We have a two-to-two tie. Wisher.
I'm not the chair. The chair's the one that gets to break the tie. You know, I agree with Commissioner Richardson. I really don't see changing the fee structure at this time. You know, let's kind, you know, if you're going to roll with this and kind of try it as you go and then make adjustments, I think, you know, we should see how many violations we do get. And if it's something that is going to be tying up a lot of our staff time with code enforcement, then, you know, we need to increase the fine, but then also decrease the time that we allow them to be, you know, instead of 12 months, we might have to change it to six months. But until we find out, you know, I'm fine with that as it's written.
Legible copy shall be posted within the unit and include all the following. And we also talked about it should be added to the Airbnb site.
Right. We talked about on eight, because the Airbnb site or the advertising requires that the provisions regulating noise be posted on the site. What we had talked about, and I'm glad you mentioned this, was adding to eight an item E that would also require that regulations or provisions regulating noise be posted inside the unit as well.
Okay. But they have to post on their Airbnb registration too, don't they?
Yes, ma'am. But this way it would also be in the unit itself.
Okay. And then, if I may, Madam Chair, I just would like to say thank you to everyone who has been a part of this, because this really started two, three years ago. And you formed a task force, a representative of the Airbnb Association, Short-Term Rental Association was involved, other Airbnb owners were involved, and neighbors impacted were involved. And so to table this tonight, or keep holding it and pushing it, kicking the can down the road, for lack of a better phrase, and you've been saying all along, we need to do something. And we can always come back and change it once we see how this plays out. But thank you for all the hard work and the input. And there's just one other issue that ECCA brought up about the number of adults versus parties with kids. Is there any way we can regulate that or not?
My recommendation, again, would be to stay with the reference back to 134-1 with regard to occupancy, and then the requirement that, you know, the maximum occupancy needs to be posted. Again, a lot of the issues that we have that may arise, if you've got a whole soccer team in a house, you know, potentially you could have noise issues and those sorts of things. I think having the short-term rental agent in place, somebody that we can contact, somebody that we can get in touch with to rectify the situation, will hopefully address some of those issues. And then as we go back, if we see that we need to take that a step further, perhaps we can explore that further and do some more research into it.
Okay. And I'd also like to thank Nick Dahl and Kevin Gobble, because they gave some good insight too with respect to the fire code and inspections and building permitting. So thanks to all the staff too, and legal.
Commissioner Gamble, I saw your, this is to refer to that point, because I'm still have to go to Commissioner Sheffield for her feedback as well.
So on 134-1, in regards to the comment made by ECCA, if we go to this section of the code, it says for one family, including up to one unrelated adult, or two or fewer unrelated adults, and their children and their grandchildren. So they could easily say that these are their kids that are on the soccer team. And you can have two unrelated adults running a house. So while I understand we're relying on this section of code to kind of lay that groundwork, there is some wiggle room in there that they can get around, and then potentially have, you know, soccer teams running out houses or baseball teams. So I think that does need to be addressed.
I concur. I think we should address it. We know this is an issue, it's been articulated. So to say to come back to address the issue that we know is an issue is to kick that can down the road. I would like to see us do something.
No large groups or parties.
I mean, that pertains to adults, but we don't have any language around children.
So I'd like to speak to that a little bit. And I'm just speaking in all candor about the enforcement of that single-family residential code as it is. We are always taking someone's word for whether or not they're related. We really ultimately, even today, in enforcing the current code. So I think that if there is, most often, we won't have an issue, a situation where there's a complaint, but if there is, and we come back and say, we've got a whole soccer team here, you know, at that point, we'll address it. But I don't know that I'm really giving you the answer, but that's one of the challenges, frankly, in enforcing that section of the code as it stands. And that's why we've referenced that code, because short-term rentals are still single-family residences, subject to all of the zoning requirements. And that may be something that down the road, the Board of Commissioners wants to discuss or evaluate. Right now, we're just proposing that short-term rentals continue to meet the same requirements of single-family residential from a zoning standpoint.
Any other thoughts regarding that particular matter? Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you. Thanks, Jessica, for all of your work on this. I know it's been a long time coming. You pretty much covered everything and answered my questions, not just tonight, but in all of the meetings that we've had. I do support the one, one application or certificate per dwelling. And while I understand that for some, there is the desire, or maybe even the need to supplement their income by renting short-term rentals, but I'm sensitive to that, but I'm also sensitive to the neighbor that lives next door to those properties. I was sent an email, maybe about a month or so ago, of a short-term rental advertisement in District Four. And it was a single-family residence, and the person was very creative, and they had plaques made with room numbers. So they were literally almost like running a hotel. And so, you know, we definitely need to have restrictions on it. And I think for those that, for those that will abide by the true essence of the idea of the short-term rental, I think for the most part, they would be agreeable to our conditions, and they will abide by our conditions. Now, of course, we're going to have our one-offs, and that's why we have, you know, code enforcement, police, et cetera, but there definitely needs to be some type of regulation. So again, I support the one, one certificate per dwelling unit.
Is there general consensus from the board to support one certificate per dwelling?
And Chair, if I may, if that's the consensus of the board, my recommendation would be to incorporate that into H on page four, number one, where it says, "Short-term rental properties are permitted in all residential zoning districts, period. No more than one short-term rental certificate shall be issued per dwelling unit."
I'm sorry, I'm on page four, letter H.
On page four, H, number one.
Number one. Can you repeat that to me, please?
So currently, it reads, "Short-term rental properties are permitted in all residential or zoning districts." I would add to that a second sentence that says, "No more than one short-term rental certificate shall be issued per dwelling unit." If that's the consensus of the board.
And early in the work session, I was referring to this clause that is in the City of Atlanta's ordinance, and I think I misinterpreted their ordinance to be that one person can only have one Airbnb property. But their code actually states what we're doing today, that it's one certificate per dwelling. Doesn't necessarily limit the number of properties that someone can have for Airbnb. Commissioner Sheffield, did you have any other comments or suggestions?
Okay, so the suggestions that I have thus far is to require in a new clause to D that there is formal notification of adjacent residents, where adjacent includes residents to both sides of the property and to the rear. We also modified eight D. And that is for the noise regulation to be posted inside the unit. And then we just added a new clause for H1. For there to be no more than one certificate issued per dwelling. I'm going through my notes to see if there were other matters shared to be addressed. I can share my general concern is that this code does facilitate a commercial practice in a residential area. Although our residential code is quite restrictive to those that desire to have long-term residential opportunities for additional persons to live in the property. So I have great consternation for us supporting a commercial use and not supporting the affordability of people living long-term in existing residential property. I have great consternation about that. But I know we do need to do something about Airbnb properties as they exist today. And I think this does help us to better regulate a lot of issues that we've had. And we're very fortunate to have people on both sides of the matter come together to support what we are putting forward today. So I am in support of the code as has been presented with the modifications that the board has agreed on. With that, Commissioners, I will move that we support adoption of Chapter 78, as has been revised per the revisions that were provided to the board, and with the additions that we agreed to today. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Seventy-eight dash four oh seven. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
More specifically?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, just one other thing that I would ask that you all consider approving or including in that would be an enforcement date or an enactment date of January 1, 2023.
Commissioners, are we all in support of that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll add that, another addition. Mostly yeses. I presume that's a consensus to add that. Okay, so I'll modify the motion to include that. Was there a second? Yes, there was a second, and there's additional discussion. Any additional questions, County Attorney? Do you have any comments before we move forward? All right, just checking. Call the question. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Okay, all right. Hopefully, the next few will be a little more straightforward. The first one is Chapter 83, Sections 83-11 and 83-12 pertaining to the weed control ordinance.
Okay. One moment.
Commissioners, I'm not seeing any modification being made to Section 83. Oh, I do see one. We have proposed an added exemption for agriculturally-used property, and that should already be in the code?
Yes, ma'am.
Jessica, can you point out where?
Yes, it's in 83-11, number four. So what we've added is the language at the end that says, "Except where such property is used for agricultural or farm use."
All right. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we adopt Section 83 as has been presented in our code amendment package.
Second.
Are there any questions or additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
All right. The next item is Chapter 90, the Parks and Recreation Code, 9063, pertaining to smoking in parks.
Again, Commissioners, I'm not seeing any additional changes other than what's been provided in our agenda book. So with that, I move that we approve the code as has been presented.
Second.
There any additional comment or question regarding this code? All right, call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, the next one is 10698. Okay, the next one is one oh six ninety-eight and one oh six ninety-eight point one pertaining to developer contributions for sidewalks and street facilities. The only change from the first public hearing package, of course, was to clarify that those funds would be utilized in the district where they're collected.
All right, Commissioners, I have moved that we approve Chapter one oh six as has been provided.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
The next item is Chapter one ten, Section eighty-six. This is pertaining to private streets.
Okay, so in one ten eighty-six, there were three changes that have been provided in this code section. Commissioners, I move that we adopt the code as has been provided.
Second and discussion.
All right. Since you offered to discuss, I'll go ahead and start with you, Commissioner Burrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can start down there.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble, did you want to add anything to this? I'm seeing enough, or she's shaking her head no. Go ahead, Commissioner Richardson.
I'm guessing you're probably going to ask something similar, so I don't want to take your questions since you...
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
There was a gentleman that brought up the question around some of the developments using alleyways, et cetera, and how does this code affect that?
Yes, and that's a great question, and he and I had an opportunity to talk very briefly before the meeting, and since then I've looked into the code a little bit more. There actually is a separate code section that addresses alleyways. So alleyways would not be subject to this that pertains to private streets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Yeah, I was just, I know DOT is here, but I just want to make sure people know that although we are requiring private roads to be up to county standards where they had variances before, that they still can be private roads in the subdivision and maintained by the homeowners, but they're just being brought up to county standards.
Yes, ma'am.
We've had questions on that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Commissioner Sheffield? Okay, so Commissioners, again, I move that we adopt Chapter one ten as has been provided.
Second.
Any additional discussion? The motion carries five zero. Thank you. That wasn't a yes. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Did the same people move in second? Did we have? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to, I think, Chapter one thirty-four.
Yeah, so zoning is always where it seems like we have multiple sections, so it probably is best for zoning to take it one section by one section.
You want to do that, Jessica?
It's up to you, Chair, however you all would like to proceed.
Okay, give me one second. Oh, this is a lot of code.
Or we could kind of clump them together. Some of them blend well to clumping.
We might need another break.
Okay, why don't we clump them together? I don't know how many we have here, but let's go four by four.
Okay, well, and some of them make sense to group, more sense to groups than others. So Chapter one thirty-four one is the definitions, and of course, we heard a lot of discussion tonight about heavy automotive repair and the parking with regard to the park, not just heavy auto, but parking at automotive repair facilities. So that may be something for the board to discuss. It also included the definition of gross trips generation, which is tied to one thirty-four, one twenty-one pertaining to the traffic studies. So it may make some sense to probably discuss each of those separately, but understanding that they are connected.
They are. Okay, yes, we'll go ahead and discuss. Why don't we discuss the automotive repair establishments? Commissioner Gamble, did you have any comments with respect to that?
Yes, I do. Jessica, how was it determined, the three vehicles?
So that was actually...
Per service bay?
That was a, that was a recommendation that came from a civic group and came as a commissioner-sponsored proposal. Community development, from our standpoint, I think, three, three per service bay, if you have three or four service bays, and when you're looking at nine to twelve vehicles, that could be parked outside, not counting whatever you may have inside the storage bay. This only pertains to outdoor overnight storage of vehicles. But again, I know we had a citizen who suggested perhaps looking at it based on what percentage of the total popping, parking area is being utilized for overnight storage. If that's something that the board would like to consider, I think we can be amenable to that, too. This is just one that we brought forward at the request of citizens.
So, and this might be an unfair question this late at night, but how is parking determined for light automotive repair? Is it done by service bay, or is it done by the square feet? How is it determined?
I can't speak to that right offhand, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
Okay, because my, the reason for my question is, you know, if a business has the parking available, you know, they should be able to have cars parked in those parking spots. So I didn't know if the reason for this code came because we had more cars being left on a, you know, business than what they had parking spaces for. You know, what's a little bit more the background that caused us to look at this?
Commissioner Gamble, I sponsored a code years ago that limited the number of cars parked at an automotive repair establishment to one car per parking space, because we had some sites where it was just overparked. And so my concern with this code is that, does it contradict it? Does it allow more than one car per parking space?
Potentially, and if that's, again, if that's the magic number that the board would like to consider, one car per parking space, I think we can easily amend this to reflect that.
But that should already be in the code, so it seems as if there's a, there's a desire to limit that even more, because I don't see us crossing that out, and that was a code that we passed a few years ago to limit it to one car per space. I don't remember. I know I worked with Kathy Pickett on that, and we've actually enforced that around the district because of just many repair establishments that were overparked.
I would offer that perhaps this is something that the board would wish us to take a deeper look at. Maybe we put this forward with the UDC, and perhaps, I know that the primary request of this one, and this is one that came from the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, was to incorporate a definition for heavy automotive repair into the definition section because it's currently not there. So the definition that you see here in this document actually reflects what's already in the general commercial and heavy industrial zoning district regulations. But then it's incorporated the limitations on the storage. So perhaps, if it's the will of the board, perhaps we can consider putting forward the definition and removing, again, if the board is agreeable, removing the limitation on the number of vehicles and let that be one of the things that we put on our list of things to address as we work on our code update.
That would be amenable to that. Just tabling that part.
It's easy to say we're amenable to that when we don't live next to overparked auto repair establishments that are, I'm sure this is being proposed because of the eyesore of those locations. And again, it's just, it's hard for me to reconcile what I know we did in the past in this code, and I'm not trying to stymie this action, I just, as Commissioner Gamble shared, I'm too, I'm trying to better understand this in light of what we did in a prior code amendment package.
She says she's almost there.
She's almost in the code.
I know I've worked with Kathy to develop the code, and we've enforced this at sites. Yes, it's supposed to be no more than one vehicle per parking.
Right. Okay, so under one thirty-four, two seventy-two, which is traffic and parking, for automotive paint and body repair shops, it says one space for two hundred square feet of floor space, one space per vehicle parked outside.
Very good. It's there.
And Commissioner, did you say auto painting?
So it's a chart.
Okay.
So it's, it's one thirty-four, two seventy-two is the section of the code, and it says, "And body repair shop." So I'm kind of taking this as a body repair shop. But it says, "One space for two hundred square feet net of floor space, one space per vehicle parked on site."
Does that include? Yeah. No, I was going to say, I think the challenge that we're dealing with is having businesses that have defined parking spaces versus businesses that are just cramming cars onto the lot. So that's where it gets a little difficult.
And if you, if, just kind of scrolling through here, like ambulance service has one space per aimless parked on site. Appliance repair, again, one space per loading dock. So it goes through asphalt plants. Assisted living is one point five, but this is not assisted living. So it has gone through on this chart and pretty much put, for automotive and truck sales and service facilities, one space per vehicle parked on site. So it looks like, you know, that this has been updated for that. For automotive salvage and wrecking yards, it was one space for three hundred square feet net of floor space, one space per an employee with a minimum of five spaces. So that one's different, but that, again, that's salvage and storage yards.
So is the code section that Commissioner Gamble reading, does it encompass the heavy automotive repair establishment?
I would say yes, it does, if it says the...
Let me go down to H's. Heavy automotive repair establishments. Three, okay, but this is interesting. It's three spaces per bay, one space per an employee. It does not go on to state, like in the other ones, one vehicle parked on site. So now it makes sense why this says three, because then that ties back to one thirty-four, two seventy-two.
So again, parking across the board is something that we're definitely going to be looking at as we work on the code update, because, yes.
But then, just to throw another ratchet in here, because it's after ten o'clock, for heavy manufacturing establishments, it's one space per a loading dock. And then for heavy repair services and trade stores, it's one space per five hundred square feet of net floor space, one space per an employee, and then one space per vehicle parked on site.
There seems to be a lot of support for one vehicle per space.
Now, here's the other question. Is inside the bay considered a space?
It says outdoor.
But this doesn't say outdoor.
Oh, actually, it does. You're right, it doesn't.
It does not say outdoors.
No, it does. It says parked outside overnight and one. That's where it was.
So just change it to one space, one vehicle per space.
Second.
It already has the three per bay, and they're inside a bay, right? They're not outside.
No, because you may only get one vehicle in a bay. So then the other two would also be parked outside. This is what happens when we have meeting cycles.
I move that we modify this to add one vehicle per parking space.
Per parking space, okay.
Outside.
Outside. In addition to the three per bay.
They can have whatever, however many they want to get inside.
Striking three per bay.
Okay. So one vehicle per parking space. Now...
Outside.
Outside, yeah.
On site.
Oh, on site, okay. So then, the other issue to address with the parking space is the parking space being defined by parking lines, because we have a lot of lots that people are just parking on top of each other, basically.
Are we doing the two hundred square feet?
We have the regulations.
One per two, two hundred square feet?
Pardon?
One per two hundred square feet.
Which is the average size of a parking space.
I would recommend, considering that we changed one under both heavy automotive repair and also light automotive repair to say a maximum of one vehicle per designated parking space shall waiting, a maximum of one vehicle per designated parking space shall be parked outside overnight.
Is there general consensus for that? A maximum of one vehicle per designated parking space shall be parked outside overnight. Okay, one. So that will modify, yes, one. Are Commissioners comfortable with the rest of that section under heavy automotive repair establishment? Other clauses pertain to dumpsters, recycling, outdoor dismantling. Wait, where are you? It's on page three. One thirty-four. Yeah, I'm at one thirty-four.
So are we striking number one, a maximum of three vehicles per service bay waiting to be repaired?
Yes, ma'am, and replacing it with what Jessica stated.
And that's also for light automotive, right, Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, good catch.
Both.
Okay, just know also in this section, we also have gross trip generation. Means the forecasting of traffic to and from a proposed development without any reductions, such as for travel mode applied. Are we comfortable with that? That's going to be connected to another code section.
Yeah, we changed that, yeah.
All right, Commissioners, I'm going to take a leap here. I'm going to ask that we adopt Section one thirty-four dash one per the revision to heavy motive, automotive repair establishment clause one and light automotive repair establishment clause one to read, "A maximum of one vehicle per designated parking space shall be parked outside overnight." Everything else remaining as has been proposed.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. It passes five zero.
Okay, I promise, I keep saying it's going to go quicker. It's going to go quicker from here.
Help us.
One thirty-four, one twenty-one. And after this, I think we'll be home free, hopefully. Fingers crossed, knocking on all the wood. So one thirty-four, one twenty-one, this pertains to the traffic studies for zoning applications. The only change that we're asking for here, of course, we've already incorporated the language about using gross trip generation to clarify how we're going to determine whether or not a traffic study is necessary. The only other change that we are recommending this evening is to change the, or putting forth for the board to consider this evening, is to change the timeframe, the requirement for submitting that traffic study to the county from thirty days prior to the planning commission public hearing to fifteen business days prior to the planning commission hearing.
Commissioner Gamble, do you have any thoughts regarding this?
Yeah, I'm fine with the fifteen. I did, I did have a question that came up, and I know you shared that there was kind of a trips-to-unit comparison for the public to know what seven hundred fifty trips would equate to for an estimated unit that Drew had.
an estimated unit that Drew had.
I'm gonna let, Amy Diaz is here with DOT, and she speaks much more eloquently to these things than I do, so I'm gonna let Amy come up here and answer those technical questions.
Thank you. Amy Diaz, DRT.
Hi, Amy, thank you. Just for the, for the sake of transparency on that, there have been a lot of estimates for what 750 trips represents for zoning cases that come in, or, yeah. What does that equate to for anticipated unit size?
The 750, or 75 during the peak hour, relates directly to the number of single-family homes that is in the current code. The rule of thumb for a single-family home is one trip during a peak hour, or 10 trips per day. And so currently, it's 75 units, and that translates to the 75 and 750.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Charles, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, we had comments from citizens on the 30 days, and we had comments from others, developers, on the 15 days on the traffic study. So what is DOT's recommendation?
So DOT recommends that this be included, because right now, there's a lot of variation in when we receive traffic studies. We sometimes go into work sessions for the Planning Commission without them. We have gotten all the way to the BOC hearing without them. And we'd like to support community development and making sure that does not happen anymore. So what the code is, and Jessica can correct me if I'm wrong, but it allows for the continuance of the case if necessary, if the traffic study isn't in yet. The 15 business days basically means that two weeks before the Planning Commission work session, we will, we will have the study. That would allow us to review it and get back with the developer and let them address comments before we go to the work session for the PC hearing.
So the 15 days would be before PC work session?
That 15 business days, the work session is five business days before the hearing, roughly. And so 15 days means two weeks, you know, 10 business days before that would be when we would have to receive the study. Or if traffic is a concern, then that would give the staff the ability to continue the case at that point officially.
And not everything requires a traffic study.
Correct.
But we have had to continue cases a lot for not having all the information we need, even by our meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so do we need to change the 30 to 15 business days?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Okay. You got that, Jessica?
Commissioner Sheffield?
You go. Thank you. I also support the 15 business day change. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I move that we adopt 134-121 with the modification from 30 days to read 15 business days. Second. Okay, is there any additional discussion?
Yes. This says before the PC hearing date.
Yes, ma'am.
Not the work session.
So it would be the 15 days, 15 business days prior to...
The hearing.
The hearing date works out to be 10 business days prior to the work session. Yes, ma'am.
No works. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
All right, so the rest of the sections that are listed here, there was no comment on this evening. We have no proposed additional changes to these. So if the Board is interested, we could perhaps take all of those as one package. And I can, I can just kind of mention what each one is. So 134-162, you don't wanna hear it? Okay. Glad to answer any questions.
No, they're just two changes from the original package, and they're listed, Commissioners. 134-266, to add the effective date per Planning Commission recommendation, and 134-324, to add missing tenant panels shall be replaced per Commissioner's recommendation. Those are the only two changes I have, unless you have any others?
Yes, ma'am, those are the only changes since the first public hearing. Correct.
Are we comfortable with that, Commissioners, generally?
Yeah, I just have an addition.
Okay. What's your addition, Commissioner?
Well, it's 134-192, or 191. That was omitted by mistake.
Yes, ma'am.
191.
So legally, Mr. Rawling, if this chapter is advertised for the public hearing, but a specific section is not, we can't add it?
I mean, historically, we have not, no. It's not giving the public fair notice regarding it. Otherwise, we'd just put up 134.
What is that? What is 191?
Updating the chart with the uses, the different categories for zoning uses. So can we, do we have to wait till the next cycle?
My, my understanding is because this has not been advertised, this section has not been advertised, that it would not be appropriate to amend it at this, at this time. My recommendation is, I've shared with a few members of the Board, and as you and I discussed before, Commissioner Burrow, would be that the consultant team is hard at work on the UDC already. My recommendation is, knowing we have inconsistencies throughout the code and the development standards that need to be addressed, and this is another one of them, I would recommend, unless there's something that is urgent, we not continue amending Section 134 and our development standards outside of that process. I think we need to let that process run its course. Again, it doesn't change anything in terms of how our office does business. We are accepting applications for those zoning districts, the RE4, RE6s and what have you. We accept applications for those. This is another case where there were about four places that this was listed in the zoning ordinance, and this is the one that got missed. And I, you know, I take ownership for that, you know? In all this huge stack of code amendments, I missed that one, and I hate that that happened. But I would recommend that we just bring that forward and clean that up through the UDC process, unless the Board deems that this is a priority, then we can bring it back in our next round of code amendments.
Well, it's, it's been out there, and it is confusing. And I know we're, we can still accept these codes, but it's really just a cleanup that needs to be done. So if legally we can add it now, I would like to add it now. If not, and that's not the consensus of the Board, then we won't.
I'm hearing two options, though, for future consideration. Either we bring it back the next code amendment cycle or with the UDC. Do you have a preference?
Whichever one's sooner.
The UDC won't be.
Yeah, well...
That's a year and a half, two-year process. You have a, so you prefer then the next code amendment cycle?
I prefer tonight.
Okay. That not being an option.
Why not?
If the Board agrees to it.
For the county attorney, understanding that wasn't properly advertised.
Right. And I, I'm not mistaken, I think you've already spoken to Ms. Blair about this too, right? To Ms. Blair about this as well? Oh, okay.
Unless, unless this section, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Debbie, can you come to the mic?
I didn't even see you there. Come up here.
I, I think as Mr. Rawling did state, if it has not been advertised by section, we cannot open up the chapter in its entirety. So it will have to be, the soonest would be the next cycle, which would be January, February.
Okay, then that's what I prefer, the next cycle.
Okay. Is there any additional support to have this come back at the next code amendment cycle, Commissioners?
I would be willing to support it. You know, we've made ComDev, you know, when we removed all the section where it was the duplicate, right? We then had ComDev go and make a chart so everybody could easily reference and not go to the individual code section. So I'm struggling with seeing why it's being such a challenge just to mark that, you know, the RE4, RE5, RE6 goes in these code sections when we've asked ComDev to do other charts to help ease this understanding. So I agree with Commissioner Burrow, you know? To me, this is just, again, making it easier for the public to understand. While it hasn't been advertised, we are not changing the code. We are not changing where it goes. We're not changing density. We're not changing parking, lot size, anything. We are just updating a chart that will make it easier for the constituents to reference. So that is where I agree with Commissioner Burrow. You know, we, we made changes to ask for the deleted parts to be put into a chart that weren't in a chart. It wasn't advertised as being in a chart. So I don't have a problem with this going into a chart.
Okay, so I'm hearing a second for support. Is there a general consensus?
They're not, they're not exactly the same, 'cause even though we asked for the definitions to be in a chart, it wasn't a chart to be put into the code, it was a chart for public consumption. So I can be, I think I would be actually really happy to have, you know, if we don't address 190, we can address 191, 'cause it's not open. We have a public chart that's available for people. It's on the code, it's not an edit to the code, but we have, I mean, even, even code that we've edited, we had to advertise, whether it's a deletion or adding of a comma or what have you, we have to open up the code for that section. So because this wasn't open, like, we can't necessarily get rid of a chart, but we can create a chart for public consumption that's updated.
But this chart had, and so, but we're also asking ComDev to essentially extrapolate from this chart, something separate for the community to digest, because everything that is there is also in this chart. So, again, I don't have a problem going in and putting, you know, whatever coding, I guess permitted, would have to go in there. 'Cause again, it would align with what's currently written in that section of the code.
Director, I know we talked about putting the list of the categories on the website for ComDev as opposed to having it in the code. Is it possible we can have the table updated on the website outside of the code amendment process, even before we come back for the next code amendment cycle?
Certainly, because the other sections of the code, that's been cleaned up, so it's already incorporated the code. I don't see any reason we couldn't include that on our website also.
I'm hearing Commissioners Richardson's thoughts as being possible consideration that can meet you where your concerns are with us not updating the table in the code as other code sections get updated, but it also puts the information out for public consumption. A compromise, that's the word I'm looking for, is a compromise position. And will we be able to accomplish that before January? What would be the timeframe in doing that?
That, I mean, as far as just putting information out for the public, again, because the code has already been adopted, and it's reflected in the other three or four places in the code that that change has been made, that we're accepting those applications for RE4, RE5, RE6. So we can put something on our website, just like FAQ zoning information that's out there, public information, like, here's the breakdown of what the zoning districts are, and also include in there an updated chart that does reflect just, on the website, just for information purposes, that those are available. And then, of course, we can clean that up as we move forward in the code.
Okay, thanks.
And that could be done prior to January.
I'd be supportive of that. I mean, it gets the update that people want ASAP. What are your thoughts? So are you okay with that, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes.
You're okay? Okay. So I'm hearing a general consensus. Okay, so then strike that consideration.
I'm good. I mean, that's, we've heard from legal.
We just, yeah, so can we do that, Jessica? 191 is not in this code amendment package, so...
Correct.
We can always come back to you. The next code amendment cycle hasn't been, you know, at least all the proposed codes haven't been confirmed yet. So if you wanna open that back up, there's still opportunity to talk to the Director about it. Okay. So Commissioners, with that, I move that we adopt Section 134-162 through Section 134-324 with the two modifications that have been included in this code amendment package. And those changes are in Sections 134-266 to add an effective date per Planning Commission recommendation, and also in 134-324 to add missing tenant panels shall be replaced per a Commissioner's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. Oh, Jessica, is there something else?
So we do have one additional request from the county attorney's office to reconsider Chapter 110, Section 86, to include an enactment date, effective date of October 1st, 2022. And that effective date's not in the code, so the ask would be to reconsider that, to include that.
So 110 pertains to private streets and subdivisions.
And clarification from Debbie that that would be for new zoning applications.
Pam, do you have that? I'm not gonna, okay.
What's the effective date?
October 1st, 2022.
Okay, I move that we adopt that change, this has been presented for Chapter 110-86. Are there any additional comments or questions?
So if we're putting an effective date on this code section, do we need to go and put an effective date on all of the code sections we're addressing? Well, 'cause like the weed ordinance, is that effective tomorrow? Is that effective October 1st? When does that go into an effect?
Unless otherwise noted, they're effective at the time that the Board approves them, so they'd be effective tomorrow. Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion passes 110. Thank you, Commissioners. Look, I'm tired. I'm sorry. The motion passes 5-0. I'm ready to move on. Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Jessica, well, when will we get the revised code amendments so that we can put the link in our newsletter for if these are gonna be effective October 1?
You know what? I will, I will put those together tomorrow, and I'll get those out to you by email this week.
Well, and the minutes will be adopted at the next minute and meeting, and all of these changes will be reflected in my minutes, as they are every time we do code amendments. And then Jessica and I work together to make sure that everything is noted correctly in the code amendments prior to sending it to Munichode, who does the complete codification of the code.
Thank you, Pam.
And we need to go back and through.
But our next meeting's October 11th, and these are all effective tomorrow, October 1.
Look, before we go on to public comment, I wanna thank you, Jessica, for doing a great job in walking us through this tonight. A great job.
Thank you.
It's been a lot of work and a lot, time coming for a lot of these codes that we adopted tonight that have come back for many code cycles. Also wanna thank the staff that's worked on this process with the Commissioners and all of the residents that have participated in the feedback process.
Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, we are at our first public comment. Before we get started... Before we get started, commissioners, it's about 10:30. Do you want to roll right into public comment, or does anybody need a five-minute break? Let's roll. I'm hearing, let's roll. Y'all don't want a break anymore? Let's do it. First public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman, as the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion should not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County government. And just as a reminder, there is a timer on the podium for how much time you have. With that being said, the first public comment, sign up is Amy Barnes.
Clearly, we've seen a number of items passed, but bait and switch comes to my mind when I saw what happened tonight. I saw what appeared to be, maybe I'm wrong, but it appears to me that these code sections allegedly being voted on were being edited in real time prior to the vote. And those of us with legal training and knowledge might understand that when you edit something, it is not the original thing that was originally published to the public. So editing things and coming up with policy on the fly before a vote does not, could be construed as something that was not published prior to the vote. Coming up with enforcement scenarios, it's a good idea, but we were sat in writing. I mean, I see the words as valid as what's on paper, and that means none of this is on paper. Where is it on paper that we're going to have an enforcement strategy? Just because somebody speaks up here does not mean it's translated or written down anywhere in future. These things are subject to instant change depending on the mood of whoever is going out and enforcing these regulations. Due process much? I don't think so. I think the due process pretty much comes from, I don't see due process. If something is being changed up here and it's not been published, that to me opens the door to litigation. That to me is not due process. That to me means that one thing is put up and held before the public, it's, oh, this is what it is, oh, 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 this is what we passed. That's bait and switch. That's just my opinion on it, and I already have problems with due process. How much code enforcement court on two tickets for property and real estate I don't own? And, you know what, we're having to bind it over to state court. It looks like code enforcement and the solicitor are just marching this county towards litigation over due process rights. I'm a landowner, and I have been a landowner since 2008, and I have seen nothing but stripping and stripping and stripping of property rights, trimming off the value. I bought outside in HLA. I bought not in an HLA specifically so that I, as a person with multiple disabilities and health problems, would have the grace that property ownership not subject to HLA comes with. I operate on a slower timeframe. I was disabled by COVID. I know what it means to need extra time. And what I'm seeing come out of code enforcement court is driving people literally to their breaking point. I personally had to step in and clean out 840 pounds of garbage off somebody else's yard that was in code enforcement for garbage because the judge and code enforcement and solicitor were all so insistent that their timeframe, their idea for enforcement had to be done on their timeline while we have people with extreme difficulty, extreme impoverishment. One guy makes $84 a month, that's all he gets. He's so disabled, he can't even apply for disability. It's beyond him. And what I'm seeing in court and what I'm seeing up here don't match. We don't have due process. I'm going to court over a truck I don't own. I can't legally move without violating criminal law on property I have no title to. So I'm seeing all of these due process rights violations. I'm telling you, you're just marching, this is going to end up in litigation. What I saw voted on tonight is not, it's changes that were being done in real time here, voting on things that are not published ahead of time. Any change that's not published ahead of time is not what was published. So literally, there's no due process being adhered to when you change things right before the vote. Should have tabled it. Have a nice night.
Chairwoman, I'm sorry.
Before we go to the next speaker bill, can you address that comment, please?
Sure. I mean, that's why we have to advertise the particular chapter that we are trying to address. That's why it gives the notice to the public for what we're, what the Board is setting out to do. That chapter is advertised, and that's why we have public hearings for them to be able to comment, and that's why the changes are done in public and in real time so that the Board, the public can see how it's been changed. Sometimes they're, just as they're drafted, as most of them actually were tonight, sometimes they're bettered based upon the public comment that came through, but it's allowed.
Thank you.
I'll go through the next couple of speakers. I think some of them may have left. Christine Rosman, Debbie Fisher, Hill Wright, Abby Schiffman.
All right.
Schiffman, are you just taking the podium?
Good evening. I was wondering if I had to say good morning. Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I am Abby Schiffman on the Library Board of Trustees, as is Peggy Poole, also a trustee member with me. Our libraries are the foundation of our county. Everyone of all ages, preschool to elderly, utilize the libraries. Each of our branches is different, and that is a benefit for each library. But it does not matter what area a library is in. It serves everyone in the county. Everyone is welcome to go to any library in the system within our county. We hope you will consider the increased funding needed to rebuild and complete Gritters, which was built in 1973 and is only 7,500 square feet. In April 2014, the library system asked for $8.6 million from the 2016 SPOST, and in April of 2015, only $2.9 million was approved, but only for expansion and renovation of Gritters. The final amount currently approved is $6.8 million, which includes $1.9 million from the state. Thank you, State of Georgia. This library is part of the Cobb County Library System. With increased costs for construction, we are in need of an additional $2.5 million to complete this project, as was presented, a much-needed rebuild, a much-needed upgrade. Peggy Poole, my fellow trustee, is one who regularly goes to Gritters. Her children grew up going to Gritters, and now her grandchildren attend multiple programs at Gritters. It is one of our smaller branches that is well utilized and needs this rebuild. Thank you, and I hope you will consider what is needed to keep our library system one of the best in the state and providing for all of our citizens here in Cobb. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Leroy Empkin. Chairwoman, that's the first six that were signed up. If you want me to, I can go to the next.
Commissioners, are you amenable to us going to the next six? Okay, yes, please.
Donna Court.
I'm Donna Court, and I'm representing just a voter, just a constituent of District 2. This is regarding the issue of home rule, and I stand before you to voice support for Commissioner Jerika Richardson. Like each of you, Chair Cupid, and Commissioners, I apologize, we are all appalled by the idea of gerrymandering in any form. Gerrymandering seeks to minimize the rights and responsibility of voters. You, our Commissioners and our devoted workers, want to empower our voters. You want to defend democracy. We, your constituents, know you do. Georgia Legislature Bill Number HB 1154 was enacted without any constituents' input whatsoever. In fact, it did nullify my vote and negated our choice. This first map is as we used to be, and I'm in the red, too, and now I'm in a different Not one of Commissioner Richardson's, over 200,000 voters had a say-so in the gerrymandered district. It is with great respect that I note, I did see that all of our Commissioners, you are so devoted tonight and every night. Commissioner Burrell, you were congratulated for 10 years of service earlier this year, and how wonderful is that? Commissioner Gamble, you've been serving since, I think, 2018. If I'm wrong, I apologize. Chair Cupid, I know you've been on the Board since 2013 and assumed the chair in 2020, as did Commissioner Sheffield now in 2020, and my Commissioner Jerika Richardson in 2020. All of you were duly elected. You make us proud. You have made our Cobb County a kinder, gentler place to live. There is strength in kindness, but there is also kindness in strength. And tonight, I want to thank you all personally for your present strength, and I ask you for your future strength, and I thank you all for all your very hard work. Thank you.
Laura Judge.
Carissa Blue. My name is Carissa Blue, and I reside in District 2, 231 Wendy Ridge Lane. I am here to present Blue Eaton Community Gardens. Now, I know that Cobb County has several community gardens, but we would like to make it a little bit different. We would like to decrease the food expenses in each household. We want to bring the community together for different volunteer work to provide education for the kids and also to help with the overall mental wellness and health in the community. Because I am a real estate agent with Keller Williams, we do understand the value of the land and how important it is to the community, and that's why we are bringing Blue Eaton Community Gardens to Cobb County. My mom recently had a stroke in 2019, and now she lives with me. Through proper nutrition and physical activities, I was able to manage her diabetes and her blood pressure. Some of the benefits of community gardens for ones who are not a member of are community organization, cultural opportunities, food production, mental and physical health, and beautifying the land. And because of the pandemic, we are looking to help the community by providing free food and vegetables, fruit and vegetables to the community. I have the support of Cobb County's Master Gardener, Ms. Terry Clark, and Ms. Renee, and they will help me consult this project from start to finish. And I also have a reference letter from my broker. Can you get this? Okay. Thank you. And, thank you, and I will hope that we can promote our mission in harvesting this in Cobb County. That's it? I think so. Thank you.
Monica Delancy. Craig Harfoot.
Anyhow, I said the word Duma, and it was Russian, and I got a little chiding, and I take exception to that because it was a legislative body that was enacted in Russia under Czar Nicholas, and it lasted from 1905 to 1917. And my comment was, why would a law firm that's involved in lobbying Cobb County to get whatever their people paying them for wants, why would they call themselves a Duma? It means it's a legislative body, not a law firm. And anyhow, that speaks to the bigger issues. I would, the way you chopped through this thing, you had at least six months of public comment that should have gone into this before you even voted on any of it, and it should have been clearly on a piece of paper, not making side notes as you conducted the meeting. I know he said it's okay, but I'm telling you, from the public's point of view, it's not okay. And the point of the comments is, you had so much there, and then I couldn't begin to comment on anything. I mean, you got three minutes, and you got hours worth of stuff to talk about, and you certainly proved it tonight, just in your little discussions. And I'm just disappointed. I'm really disappointed because you could have done this process. I don't know why you think you got, it comes up every year or six months, and you got to slam dunk this much material in one night. It's just wrong. And it makes me wonder, you know, all the stuff about, what about people that own houses that have roommates? Are they going to get a license? I'd like, I'm going to find that one out because some of you may need to get licenses now. But, you know, after 2008, I knew plenty, I knew people near me on Lower Roswell Road that were foreclosed on. And then later, months later, I was at a estate sale, and I saw the person, and they were living with somebody else in one of the subdivisions, and they just, the friend took them in. They didn't have any options. Now, do they got to get a license? And when you get to families, there is no limit to how many people you can stick in a house if they're all family, is there? Grandkids? So hopefully not because you want them sleeping out under the weather, or we all need shelter. And like I said, if all you got are the development people, East Cobb Civic, whose people basically, some of them are invested in the things that are going on, they make their living at development and growth, and they got the input in what gets done to suit them, it's not fair to the rest of us. And business license is the excuse that we get that you can do this thing. Well, you know what? When America was, in the early 1800s, there was only one profession that was licensed. It was a minister of all things, not a lawyer, not a doctor, nothing. It was a preacher, because that's what they wanted to control, what they said from the pulpit. And if you contradicted a preacher then, you were put in a stockade. It was an imprisable fine offense. To come to this today... To come to this today, it's amazing. If you want to restrict and say, I mean, we've licensed everybody from soup to nuts. And there's no reason for it. We all need to be able to unencumbered make a living and house ourselves. And y'all just seem to want to, let's get some money from them, let's get some money from them. Oh, then we can take it away from you. And you can't even make a living or feed yourself. I mean, I've come here when you even licensed waiters of all things. I mean, that's as low on the totem pole as you get. But, you know, this is not what our founding fathers thought for this country. It's not. I mean, Paul Revere, he lived above his Silversmith shop. If you were an apprentice of Paul Revere, you worked for him for five years to learn the trade and you slept in the corner. So, come on, people, we can do way better. This is.
Mr. Harfoot, I'm sorry, your time's up. Chairwoman, that's the last speaker for public comment.
I want to make a note that Duma is someone's last name. That's someone's last name. This is not made up in, I'm sorry, I'm speaking, I'm, sir, I'm not asking, that is someone's last name. Sir, it is very offensive, it is very offensive to make insinuations about someone's name and then expect us to view anything else you have to say with credibility. I find that very offensive. You said you ran for office here in 2005. It is 2022. Do you know how many times you've had code amendments? This is the first time I've heard you bemoan the process. Is it because something is different? Is it because the people up here are different? I take offense to that. I take, I take offense to that. We, what we do here, we do in the public and we do in the, we do in the light. And we've done it with feedback from the public today. We are going to move on to the next, to the next part of this meeting. Matters for our consent agenda. The matters on the consent agenda were scrolling before this meeting. They will scroll after this meeting. There are some modifications that have been made to the consent agenda. Once I find it, we will continue. We are moving two items to the regular part of this meeting. We are moving Agenda Item Number 43. That pertains to the purchase of public safety vehicles. We are also pulling Finance Item Number 49 as it relates to the parking deck. We are moving that to the regular agenda. I believe there were a number revisions to other items to address some clerical errors. Commissioners should have received pink sheets with respect to those items. Once I find it, thank you. Forty-three has been moved, both forty-three and forty-nine. Again, forty-three is with respect to public safety vehicles. Forty-nine is with respect to the parking deck. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as has been revised. Is there any discussion?
I do not support Agenda Item Number 31.
Thirty-one, let's see which one that is. Okay, that pertains to the Stewardship Program Grant Application for the Chattahoochee River Trailhead. We will mark Commissioner Gambrell as being opposed to that item. Is there any further comment or question? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We will now move to the first item that was pulled off of consent. And that is in reference to the authorized purchase of public safety vehicles.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Public Safety has one item on regular and it's to authorize the purchase of public safety vehicles pursuant to the 2022 Cobb County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Tier One. The replacement of public safety vehicles was approved in an amount not to exceed $10 million. The Department of Public Safety will work in accordance with Cobb Fleet Management, Cobb Fleet Management Replacement Schedule to ensure that our fleet is maximized through a rotation that provides for the replacement of the oldest and most inefficient vehicles first. So the recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of public safety replacement vehicles using available state contracts, source well, and other contract pricing agreements for the procurement of replacement vehicles per Fleet Management's Vehicle Replacement Schedule in an amount not to exceed $10 million as part of the 2022 Cobb County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Director.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has one item and this is, relates to the prepayment for certificates of participation related to our two parking decks. In 2010, the Board authorized the issuance of $10,730,000 to construct the Lawrence Street Deck and to refinance the outstanding debt associated with Cherokee Deck. As of the end of this September, there is $5,955,000 outstanding on those certificates of participation. And what we're asking is to pay those off in this year. What we're going to do is transfer the funds from the General Fund to the Parking Deck Fund and pay those off early in fiscal year 2023 because we have an advertisement period that we have to adhere to. In doing this, we will save the county over $1.1 million over the life of these bonds or these certificates of participation, which are very similar to bonds. They are currently scheduled to be paid through 2031. And that's over $700,000 a year that will go from the parking deck to pay these bonds. But by paying them off early, we'll be saving the county over, like I said, $1.1 million. So with that, I ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the prepayment in full of the Association County Commissioners of Georgia Leasing Program Certificates of Participation for the Cobb County Courthouse Parking Deck Project Series 2010. Authorize the related discharge of the trust indenture, the purchase of the parking deck, cancellation of the deed to secure the debt, the debt and the security agreement, and other necessary or appropriate actions related thereto. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the execution of the necessary or appropriate documents.
Thank you, Bill. This item was asked by a citizen to be pulled from consent because of the high dollar a mile. But I'm glad we pulled it off consent because this is actually a good news report for the county.
Absolutely.
Yes, to be able to save this amount of money over time. So Commissioners, I'm glad to make a motion in support of this item.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gambrell, go ahead.
So, Bill, I know this isn't related to paying off the parking deck, but it was another question that was not answered for this citizen. So LAS operates the parking deck. How do we see that going forward? And will the county have to continue to subsidize the parking deck fees?
So that is a great question. So currently, we have an agreement that runs through 2024 with LAS to operate the parking deck. This in no way changes that agreement. It would run its course. The Board would then have to make a determination of how they wanted to operate the parking deck moving beyond that existing contract. So what this is going to do is basically after 2023, when we pay off these certificates of participation, the parking deck will no longer be obligated to pay the $700-plus thousand a year that we currently pay on debt service. So that money would be able to stay within the parking deck for things that we see on a regular basis. We know we have capital maintenance related to the parking deck. Whenever we have a gate broken, General Fund and Property Management have to take care of that. There's no additional revenue. So this is going to free up those dollars and the Board can make a determination at a later date of how they want to handle those if that reserve becomes significant. That money could be eligible, go back to the General Fund in a future date if the Board so chooses. There's a variety of options the Board will get to look at to make decisions how they want to run that in the future. But this is simply addressing how we deal with the outstanding debt. And the operation of the parking deck again is under contract through 2024. I would expect at that time, when that contract expires, the Board would have a lot of options to consider.
That's very interesting. Now, that was an interesting observation to know that the agreement runs for another two years. Commissioner Burrell.
But that's just to operate the deck.
That is correct.
So that really has nothing to do, per se, with the bond that we'll be paying off. But it was a good question from the constituent to know what our plans are future. And we do have a contract that we will be honoring. And my, my question is, does that, the revenue from the parking deck with the overnight and weekend traffic cover the cost of operating, well, pre-COVID and post-COVID?
That's a great question. So in 2019 was our first year under LAS. That was our best year that we saw as far as revenues generated. And then you had two years of the pandemic. So it's hard to say what that would look like. But in 2019 was a very good indicator that we were close to breaking even. And that included the debt service that we're paying on the current certificates of participation. So that was the best indicator that we have. Now, following that, you had a pandemic, so it's hard to say. But we can say with certain, even at pandemic levels, it, the revenue that is generated from the parking deck exceeds the amount that we pay LAS. So, and that is really our cost that we have. We have that, utilities and any ongoing capital maintenance associated with the deck. But you're taking $700,000 off the table annually that we're required to pay. So yes, I can say the revenue generated from the deck would be sufficient to cover the operations, yes.
Okay. So piggybacking on that point that Commissioner Burrell made, can we look at reducing the amount that's being paid to use the deck between now and the end of the contract period?
The Board has complete authority to make operational decisions associated with the parking deck. We have a flat rate that we, or a rate that we are contractually obligated to pay LAS each year. There is an incentive associated with additional revenues beyond $700,000 if where they were to generate. They only hit that mark in 2019 because that was the only year that we've had really without a pandemic. So there's a lot of decisions the Board can make around the operations. And again, that, that is not tied to what we're doing here today, but it is something for the Board to consider in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to DOT Regular.
Good evening again. DOT has 11 items on the regular agenda. The first item is the Department asking, recommending to the Board of Commissioners approve a Department of the Army license with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for bridge maintenance on Mars Hill Road over Alatuna Road, Project Number X2115, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Forgive me for a moment, Carl. Forgive me a moment. Commissionership. All right, Carl, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to restate that?
Yeah.
The first item is the Department recommending to the Board of Commissioners to approve a Department of the Army license with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for bridge maintenance on Mars Hill Road over Atlanta Creek, Project Number X2115, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
I'm going to correct that, it should be Alatuna Creek. And with that correction.
Did I say differently? At what time is it again?
11:02. But with that correction, I support that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Second item, the Board of Commissioners to approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Powder Springs for Powder Springs Marietta Street Traffic Signal System Preservation, Project Number B2553. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 58. The Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Powder Springs in an amount not to exceed $3 million for 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Joint City Projects. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item 59. The Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company as savings to the contract in the amount of $1,313,860 for McCullum Parkway at Ben King Road, Project Number X2309, Big Shanty Road Sidewalk, Project Number X2704, and McCullum Parkway Multi-Use Trail, Project E7350, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 60. The Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Haya Drive in response to a void. Approve Project Number B2245 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Advanced Sports Construction in an amount not to exceed $395,825, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 61. Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting as savings to the project in the amount of $55,734.90 for drainage system repairs on Rock Crest Court. Project Number B2224. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any comments or questions? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 62. Board of Commissioners change, Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Advanced Sports Construction as savings to the project in the amount of $21,974 for drainage system repairs on Jane Drive, Project Number 2852. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 63. The Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County Board of Education for the donation of right-of-way and temporary construction easements on a tract of land identified as Project Parcel Number Two for Chestnut Lake Drive Sidewalk, Project X2730. Authorize the acceptance of the donation of required right-of-way for the said project and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes 5-0.
Item Number 65. The Board of Commissioners approve supplemental.
Sixty-four?
Am I on sixty-four?
496.
Did I skip one?
Pass all of our bets.
Let me see, there's sixty-four. Did we do this one? Okay, sixty-four. Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under Georgia Code. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Mabelton Parkway Pedestrian Improvements Phase Two, Project X2770. Adopt a resolution in order in form substantially similar to the attached and approved by the County Attorney's Office and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. county attorney's office and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
All right, we're getting there. Item 65. Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the resurfacing contract 2022-4 Local Roads with Magnum Paving in an amount not to exceed $198,066.59 for resurfacing at the Cobb Link Maintenance Facility. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve as revised.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Final item, number 66. The Board of Commissioners authorize the transfer of general fund undesignated contingency funding to the department's Public Safety, Public Facility Projects Fund in an amount of $200,000 for White Boulevard Sidewalk, project number TR531, and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Sheffield? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Carl. Before we go to the next regular agenda item, I need a clarification from the clerk. We have a District Two non-agenda item here with respect to fire and emergency services. This is to authorize and accept a donation from Mr. Jack Milky. Was that included in the consent agenda that was revised?
It was not. It was supposed to be, and I failed to make that clear to you, so...
That's okay. Can we go ahead and vote on this separately outside of consent?
I think with confirmation from the current county attorney that we would need to add it to the agenda because it wasn't originally in the agenda and then we could...
Then you could vote on it if you wanted to. Mr. Kreider could probably tell us how important it is, so...
Okay. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we add this matter to our agenda for this evening. Second. Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and we'll hear from Director Kreider.
Thank you. She's going to go second.
Yes, this is a gentleman that's wanting to donate a TV of value of $5,000 to, actually, it's to purchase station equipment. I assumed it was TV, but it must be other equipment. But anyway, he was, he's wanting to make this donation and for whatever reason, he was under a time constraint, and so he wanted it done ASAP.
All right. With that, Commissioners, does everybody have this agenda item? We're good? Okay. I move that we approve this agenda item as has been presented. Second.
It's definitely District Two.
Let's go to Commissioner Richardson.
I know the brother of this individual, and definitely want to say thank you for the donation.
All right.
She should have made the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
They're having a moment.
We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. I just want to let Commissioners know that we discussed chickens at 1:15 in the morning about 10 years ago. We made it through, Commissioners.
Don't go there, Dan. It's not a code amendment anymore.
Okay. We are going to the next regular tab. That's for public services.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Our item this evening is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize application for grant funding for the improving neighborhood outcomes in disproportionately impacted communities through the state of Georgia Office of Planning and Budget. This grant is a reimbursable grant for up to $2 million per identified park project that sits inside a qualified census tract. Several park properties currently sit inside a qualified census tract, and we are evaluating projects with staff and Commissioners. We ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize application for grant funding for the improving neighborhood outcomes in disproportionately impacted communities through the state of Georgia Office of Planning and Budget and further authorize the Parks Director and/or Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Agenda item 67 goes to, I have two Commissioners. How about we start with you, Commissioner Gambrell? So moved. Second. All right. Any discussion or questions? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We now have IS.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this evening is to request the Board of Commissioners approve the transfer of appropriated funding from the IS FY '22 General Fund Budget to the IS 2016 SPOS Fund Budget in the amount of $413,500. Approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for configuration and implementation of an Enterprise Information Technology Service Management System, 2016 SPOS Project X0020. Authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees with the top-ranked firm and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right, so moved as presented. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioners. Commissioner Gambrell's in opposition. The motion passes 4-1. Okay, I understand that we may be pulling Agenda Item 69. I'll refer to you, Commissioner Burrell. This is with respect to gritters.
Yes, we are.
Want to state anything publicly because we have public comment?
And we have two of our trustees here. Until we can figure out where an additional $2.5 million is coming from with consensus on the board for that, we're going to look at other avenues to explore with relation to gritters. It's near and dear to my heart, too, and it kills me not to be able to move this forward, but it's just, we've got some more work to do. But we'll get there. We'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, and moving on to HR's tab.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. This item is to approve certain revisions to the county's compensation policy. The policy, compensation policy authorizes supplemental pay for certain positions in public safety in the sheriff's office, and this language clarifies and makes more consistent the categories of that specialty pay and then makes it consistent from division and department to department, the percent that's paid to employees for those different categories of specialty pay. In addition, there's some language clarification that's come about as part of the implementation of the recent market comp and class study. Clarifies that the midpoint is the market control point of pay ranges. Also clarifies the current practice of if you all approve merit increases, those are effective in March rather than October as they previously were. So be happy to answer any questions about that.
Commissioners, I move that we adopt this agenda item as has been presented. Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? I know I asked a question about financial impact, and I understand if there was any, it would be modest.
That's correct, to be within the current budget, yes.
All right. With that, we'll call the question. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Commissioners, that takes us to our second public comment. And we have no speakers, so we will go on to the Commissioners' public address. Oh, Commissioner Kimbrel, please, go right ahead.
Our Cobb EMA DOT have been preparing for a possible tropical storm from Hurricane Ian. Forecasters emphasize that the impacts on Cobb County could vary widely depending on the eventual track. We thank our Cobb County Emergency Management Team as they've been participating in planning meetings with the Georgia Emergency Managements. And then our Department of DOT has also spent the days clearing storm drains and dealing with traditional flooding hotspots in preparation for the possible impacts from Hurricane Ian. Residents can follow updates on our hazard maps, which is on the QR code provided. Please be sure to click on Hurricane and Cyclone tab at the top. Seniors 55 and older, test your billboard skills in an eight-ball tournament at West Cobb Senior Center on Friday, September 30th, starting at 10:45 in the morning. The tournament will be running with standardized World Billard Congress of America eight-ball rules. For information and registration, you can scan the QR code provided here. Happy fall break to our students. Do you have a K through fifth grader who loves science? You can join the Cobb 4H teen leader, Rasha Ghahil, and get fuzzy with her STEM Day science experiments. Learn science concepts through hands-on experiments. This class will be on Friday, September 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Extension Office. The fee is $10 and covers all supplies, so hurry and register as seats are limited to the first 15. You can call the office at 770-528-4070 to register. And lastly, you can join us on Saturday, October 15th, for our Fourth Annual Pumpkin Day at Still Family Farms located at 5682 Macklin Road in Powder Springs. The event is from 10:00 to 7:00 p.m. and will feature hayrides, a pumpkin patch, a five-acre zinnia flower maze, face painting, pump duck races, food and more. Again, the date is October 15th, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Shana Tova to all those celebrating Rosh Hashanah, which ends tonight. From the office, we were able to celebrate Employee Appreciation Day at the fair and gave out wonderful prizes, including annual leave. I heard that was the most popular heads out, but definitely just a really good time, really good food, and really great people. So thank you again to staff for all that you do, and this is just a small token of Out of our office, congrats to Laura for standing up. I think it's her first on the cabinet, her first project as the education seat in collaboration with EMA and Fire Services for the first aid and CPR training. Got a chance to hang out. I heard one of the high schools even offered extra credit for attending, so that's pretty awesome. But they got a crash course in learning how to save a few lives in case they run into an emergency. Community huddle, oh, by the way, for the previous one, there are more classes coming up. I meant to say that, too. We have the next one, October 17th, at East Cobb Library from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., so make sure you sign up using that QR code. But next up, community huddle. Next one is this Saturday, October 1st, at 11:00 a.m. I think we broke a record for the code amendments, community huddle, so maybe we can continue with that trajectory. It's really a great time, and you get to talk about anything you want to talk about. I'll answer you if you can, if I can. If not, I'll just ask staff and come back later. Community updates. So we've got citizenship kits at Cobb Libraries. Have you been looking to start your journey to citizenship? A citizenship and civics kit will be available for checkout starting Monday, October 3rd, from Cobb County Public Libraries. The kit includes official U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services publications and study guides on the naturalization process for becoming a U.S. citizen. The kit is designed to provide information for people exploring the steps for becoming a citizen, a process that can be challenging. It will also be helpful for preparing for a meeting with an immigration attorney. For more information, because I spent quite a bit of time speaking, hopefully you captured the QR code, visit the link or go to cobbcounty.org/library. That concludes my announcements.
Wow, good. We are moving along. Okay.
There's still hope.
I too had fun at the employee appreciation event at the fair. It was, it was a great way to thank all of our staff and employees for all their hard work, and it was great to be back at the fair and, and have this event. So thanks to all who volunteered and had to wear orange shirts, as you can see here. And, but most of all, thanks to the employees and their families that came out to attend. There's a new U.S. Veterans Affairs Clinic in Marietta. It opened yesterday. It is a specialty clinic located at 1263 Cobb Parkway North, near the intersection of Bell's Ferry. It will offer services including primary care, mental health, radiology, audiology, eye, dental, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and prosthetics. The audiology, physical, and occupational therapy, dental, and eye specialty clinics have opened first, and the primary care and mental health services will open over the next few months. It will serve approximately 17,000 veterans and employ about 200 workers. There's a lot of early voting that starts October 11th. I'm sorry, October 17th. You can request an absentee ballot now for the November 8th general election. You can request absentee ballot by mail. It must be received by your local Cobb Board of Registars office by the time the polls close on Election Day to be counted. And you can visit my voter page with the Secretary of State to find out if you're registered and where you vote. So October 11th is the last day to register to vote in the general election. October 28th is the last day to submit an absentee ballot application, and voting is November 8th. And there's also some flyers in the back with the locations and times for the early voting locations. Cobb Diaper Day is back. The 14th Annual Cobb Diaper Day Drive is virtual and continues through the end of October with a goal of collecting 100,000 diapers for families in need. You can make a direct contribution at cobbdiaperday.com. You can purchase them through Amazon, and they'll be shipped directly to the Diaper Day location. Or there are two Wednesdays in October that have been designating for dropping off diapers at the Solar Flower Garden of Cobb EMC at 1,000 EMC Parkway in Marietta, and that is October 12th from 9:00 to noon, and October 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Once collected, the diapers will be donated to community organizations for final distribution. Our annual How to Do Business with Cobb is back Wednesday, October 12th, in this, in the, at the Senior Wellness Center, 1150 Powder Springs Street. It is free, but you do need to register, and you can email kimberly.jorgensen@cobbcounty.org or call the office at 770-528-3317. And I'd like to recognize tonight our Community Affairs Officer for Precinct One, Five, and Four, Michael Justice. And he has a perfect name for what he does. He is always at events in the, in the district, all the districts. He's always hands-on and is, is a great asset to our Community Affairs Unit and our Police Department. He received the Hero of the Month Award. He's done a lot of work within the Community Affairs Unit to bridge the gap between law enforcement and the community. So congratulations to Officer Justice, well-deserved. And then sign up for my newsletter if you haven't already, cobbcounty.org/burrell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you.
Cobb employees had an opportunity to enjoy camaraderie and festivities at the North Georgia Fair on Saturday. Saturday's Fun-filled Day, I'm sorry, employees, if you missed out on Saturday's Fun-filled Day, don't worry, there will be another opportunity for you to enjoy on tomorrow, September 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you to all of our county employees for keeping us running on all cylinders. We appreciate you. Last week, I, along with staff, hosted two town hall meetings in District 4. Michael Brantley and I met with the residents of the Osborne Community to share amenity and activity survey results for the recreation center. And pickleball made it to the top five. Updates will be posted on the county's website and in my newsletter as we move along in the process. At the second town hall last week Thursday, I was joined by Chief Van Hooser, who shared important technology tools to combat crime. Kathy Pickett discussed District 4's code enforcement challenges and how we, and how the county plans to address those challenges. Jessica Gwen discussed updates on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the Unified Development Code, and several provisions from the Code Amendment. I also shared residential and retail development updates, construction projects, and more exciting D4 news. In the Zone, District 4, District 4's monthly In the Zone meeting will be tomorrow, September 28th, at 7:00 p.m. Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes and I will discuss October's zoning cases and recap September's BOC zoning decisions. Our monthly In the Zone community meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in our community. Please email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Hope to see you tomorrow evening. Members of the Mableton Improvement Coalition would like to invite you to their Economic Development Summit on Friday, September 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the Riverside EpiCenter located at 135 Riverside Parkway in Austell. There is a stellar lineup of speakers and local businesses ready to dive in and discuss challenges, opportunities, and solutions to maintaining and attracting businesses in Mableton. The cost of the summit is $50 per person, which includes breakfast and lunch. For more information, email info@mableton.org. The South Cobb Business Association has partnered with Sweetwater Mission and Westside Bank to bring golf to the City Club of Marietta. The golf tournament will be held at 510 Powder Spring, Powder Springs Street, Southeast in Marietta on Monday, October 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There are few options to participate. You can register as an individual player, be a part of a team, or become a sponsor. For more information, please visit the South Cobb Business Association's website. And finally, Cobb Parks present the Maple House Festival, sponsored by the Friends of the Maple House, on Saturday, October 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you're looking for family fun, this event will not disappoint. There will be storytellers, hayrides, crafts, music, games, a petting farm, and more. Admission is free. To find out more about this exciting event, visit cobbparks.org.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank everyone for staying here until late this evening, and it will be my job to get us out of here before midnight. You don't sound hopeful.
I heard Ryan.
That was Ryan.
I know. I heard him.
Ryan, I'll, I'll get you out of here. Quite recently, many of us on the board had opportunity to celebrate a new street named after our former chairman, Tim Lee. I think it was fittingly named Tim Lee Way, and it was great to see his legacy honored, considering the work that he did to get the stadium here in Cobb County. Just last year, we had more than 9 million people visit the Battery, and we have over 5,000 employees there, and it was nice to see his family on hand for that occasion. Another occasion associated with the Braves, I had a unique invitation to go to the White House yesterday, where President Biden honored the Braves for their victory of winning the World Series. And it was all the pomp that you would expect for the White House. And it was certainly glad to, to be there, to see the dignitaries in Congress and from the state who were there. And I almost fell out my chair when he actually said my name. I was like, oh, that's pretty neat. Yes. But he did, yeah, he did demote me to Commissioner. All right. We can go to the next slide. Again, as Commissioner Richardson recognized, tonight will end Rosh Hashanah, and we certainly wish those celebrating the holiday a sweet and happy New Year. Here is my dear Executive Assistant Janine with a new loved one in her home, a rescue from Cobb County's Animal Services, none other than Golden. Golden is a beautiful puppy, and she's sure to keep Janine going day in and day out. Just want to thank everyone for all of their contribution for today in the Code Amendments, and thank the staff for putting together a great event to recognize our employees. We thank our employees for everything that you do, and I certainly couldn't let the evening go by without just sharing that it's my goal for us to have an inclusive county, inclusive county, and that means one that's also culturally sensitive. And forgive me for my frustration in just, again, hearing comments made about someone's name and referring to it in a way that I think was culturally insensitive. There's a lot of stories about those type of name-collings and the hurt that it causes people, and I hate to hear that among children, and I certainly hate to hear that amongst adults, particularly when there are people from many nationalities living amongst us, and we just recognize International Festival here in Cobb County, where we have 15% of our residents come from foreign-born countries. And so, I will always be mindful of that. My family's not from this country, and I would not tolerate that if anybody were to be disrespectful towards my family's heritage, and I'm not going to tolerate that for anyone else's. So, with that, I hope that everyone has a good evening. Commissioners, I'm excited we passed these Code Amendments, and I look forward to seeing you at our next BOC meeting. Thank you. Thank you.